Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. We will call this meeting to order and I'll just make a few quick housekeeping reminders. Number one, if you're wishing to address the Planning Commission, we do ask that you complete one of these forms that are out right out front that you can pick up and just put whichever item you'd like to visit on. We'll only be calling on neighbors who want to address us who have actually completed the form, so please make sure you do that if you are wishing to address the commission. We do ask that if you're here with a group of neighbors that you please appoint one neighbor to represent all of the views of your neighborhood with regard to your questions, concerns, et cetera. And we do retain the right to stop any repetitious comments that you may be making. Each person will be given five minutes to speak and we just ask that you follow the golden rule and remember to respect each other and respect the process and the commission. At this point, I'd also like to take this opportunity to welcome our brand-new planning commissioner, Mr. Bobby Newman. We're very happy to have you here. We love Commissioner Hinkle, so we're confident we're going to love you because he's very much happy to have you here in this position as well.
Thanks.
And so with that, let's move forward with receiving the minutes from the May 25th, 2023 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move to receive the minutes from the May 25th Planning Commission meeting.
The motion, Commissioner Claire has moved to receive the minutes from the May 25th meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. We're now in line for continuance requests and we'll begin with uncontested requests.
Item 29, KC 7564, defer to July 13th. Item 30, KC 7561, defer to July 13th. Item 31, SPOD 1509, defer to July 13th. Item 32, SPOD 1535, defer to July 27th. Item 33, Case PUD 1949, defer to July 27th. Item 34, KC 7524, defer to August 24th. Item 35, KC 7527, defer to August 24th. Item 36, Case PC 10867, has been withdrawn, and Item 37, Case PC 10876, has been withdrawn.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, and I am not opposed to the continuance, but I did want to address the item 30, which is C-7561. I have just been retained this week by a couple dozen of the nearby residents to respond to this application, and I have a scheduling conflict with the July 13 meeting, so I just would request that this item be continued to the July 27 meeting, if possible. And I did visit with Mr. Zizao and I understand he and Mr. Box representing the applicant, so I made them aware that this would be necessary for us to make this request, and again, it's just due to a scheduling conflict that I have. So if possible, we would request July 27 instead of July 13 for item 30, C-7561.
Thank you, Kelly. Would the applicant like to respond?
Yes, David Box, 522 Call Cord Drive. So this is an application for a plat. We already continued it from today's docket to allow an opportunity to visit with the neighbors, which we attempted to do yesterday. We were able to do with a couple for a short amount of time. It's a fairly simple application. It's a plat that conforms to the city's regulations. It's not a zoning case. An additional continuance will be a financial burden on my client, so we would prefer to have it on the July 13th, given it was hashed out at the zoning stage and this is simply a plat.
Okay. Commissioners, thoughts? I'll weigh in initially and say, we'd certainly like for the neighbors to be represented. When they're presenting the plat, I certainly have, with all due respect to the substance of the issue, that I know that there's limited changes that could be made at the plating stage versus the, if we were considering rezoning, but we certainly want them to be represented, I would think. Seems to put them at a disadvantage by not allowing it, but I certainly understand the burden that we're putting on the applicant.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I would add that while normally a plat you would think wouldn't have much, if they've hired counsel, they must have some concerns, so I'm afraid I'd think I'd rather defer to another couple of weeks, even though it is a burden. I think we should do that.
Other thoughts, commissioners?
Two weeks is not excessive amount of time, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I had some little bit of questions on this one. Nothing serious, really, but I would be interested in hearing neighbors' concerns, for sure. Whether it be, you know, what, 13th or the 27th? 13th would be, you know, I think would be fine, but I don't, you know, what staff feels about that, I don't know.
Well, Kelly's here and I'm here. Maybe we just haven't heard today.
Nice try. Your client did hear that, I hope, okay? I think we just need to vote then. Why don't we just vote on this as a separate item and just on the deferral of item 30 and then consider the rest of the continuance requests? So we just need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer item number 30 to, from July 13th to July 27th.
Commissioner Gauvine has moved to defer C-7561 to the July 20, what is it, 27th meeting? That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. There we go. And the motion passes. We're now in line for a vote on the remaining uncontested requests for continuances.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the uncontested continuance request as read.
The motion is to grant the uncontested continuance request as read with the exception of item 30, C-7561. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for new requests. Are there any new requests?
There is one new request, item 24, Case SPOD 1536, request to defer to July 13th.
Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on that item? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the new continuance request as read.
The motion is to grant the new continuance request of item 24. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes.
Waiting.
Buffering here.
Nobody else wants to continue, sure.
Commissioner Noble, seconded the motion. There we go. All right. Please bear with us while we work with the technology. If only it was the old days with the, the old voting machine was better, I think. All right, and the motion passes.
How about yay?
Oh, did you, oh.
Didn't count, but it's fine.
Okay. We are now in line for the consent docket.
Item one is, item one is KC 7558, final plat of Reno and Rockwell, located west of North Rockwell Avenue and north of West Reno Avenue. Item two, Case C-7560, final plat of Knox Farm Edition, Section 3, located south of Northwest 178 Street and west of North Portland Avenue. Item three, Case C-7562, final plat of East Lake, Section 1, located south of Northeast 150th Street and west of North Post Road. And item four, Case C-7563, final plat of Harbor Landing, located south of Northwest 3rd Street and west of North Cemetery Road.
Thank you. Is there anyone here wishing to be heard on any of those items, items one through four? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent docket.
Commissioner Claire has moved to approve the consent docket. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item five.
Item five is Case C-7557, preliminary plat of Blackberry Ridge, located south of Southeast 44th Street and west of South Hiwasey Road, and variances to Sections 5.3.1. D. 5. And 5.4. 2. E. 5. of the subdivision regulations.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present? Please come forward. And please give us your name and address for the record.
David Jones for the applicant with the Orion Group, excuse me. I really don't have a whole lot to add. I would, I know we'll get to the TEs here in a minute and I'll address those. I had an opportunity to visit with Mr. Lodge just now, and we have an item to address on TE number four, and then I think you'll find that on TE number three, we're in acceptance of providing that stub out to the west as requested in that TE, so we can eliminate that.
Okay. So do you want to talk to us about item four?
Address any questions from the commission.
Do you want to talk to us about TE four and where we are on the private access drives? I understand.
Yeah, okay, yeah. If you're ready for that, I am. Right now, we have shown those as a private drive, and what we're looking at doing is converting those to private streets, which will circumvent the naming and addressing component on that aspect of it. They'll all be built to City of Oklahoma City standards, and all of that will be dealt with during the plating phase.
So this is my question for staff. What changes are needed with regard to TE four in order, does that mean TE four is no longer needed because we actually need to amend the application itself to convert it from private drives to private streets? Just want to make sure we're getting the process correct.
Yeah, Jared Martin, Planning Department. I believe we can delete the TE that talks about the private drives and just make a TE that, or replace it with a TE that says, "Convert private drives to private streets" and build to city standards.
Excellent. Thank you. And so Commissioner Privet, this is in your ward. Do you want to begin our discussion?
Yeah, my main concern was the connection, and the applicant has agreed to the connection, so I'm okay with it.
Good to go. Good on the private streets, I'm assuming?
Yeah, up to city standards, fine, because they can go, you know, actually to the city street if they need to. Yep.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? I have no one else signed up to speak. I think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move to approve Case Number C-7557 with the removal of TE four and.
And three. No, yeah.
We need to vote on one of them, though, right?
The variance.
On the four.
Number three.
No, we don't need four because I guess we're.
Well, actually, we need, yeah, that's what Nate's saying, we need to vote on the variance first, so, yeah, we'll vote on the variance on 5.4.2.E.5.
But wait a second, we don't, we don't need the variance, right?
For the drives, we do.
We still need them, even for, even though we're saying that they're streets.
Right, Sarah? Or we don't?
Jared's saying we don't need them.
No. Okay, so let's nix those and then three and four, and vote for approval of C-7557.
So we need to add the TE requiring private streets instead of private drives.
Right. Yeah, edit number four to be private streets instead of drives to eliminate the need for a variance.
Excellent. So Commissioner Privet has moved to recommend, to approve of C-7557 with the removal of TE three and. And three. No, yeah.
We need to vote on one of them, though, right?
The variance.
On the four.
Number three.
No, we don't need four because I guess we're.
Well, actually, we need, yeah, that's what Nate's saying, we need to vote on the variance first, so, yeah, we'll vote on the variance on 5.4.2.E.5.
But wait a second, we don't, we don't need the variance, right?
For the drives, we do.
We still need them, even for, even though we're saying that they're streets.
Right, Sarah? Or we don't?
Jared's saying we don't need them.
No. Okay, so let's nix those and then three and four, and vote for approval of C-7557.
So we need to add the TE requiring private streets instead of private drives.
Right. Yeah, edit number four to be private streets instead of drives to eliminate the need for a variance.
Excellent. So Commissioner Privet has moved to recommend, to approve of C-7557 with the.
I don't know if we asked if anybody wanted to be heard on it.
We didn't.
If anybody does, please.
I did not have anyone sign up to speak, so.
Okay.
No one signed up, no questions from commissioners. The motion from Commissioner Privet is to, is to approve C-7557, subject to the following changes to the technical evaluations, deleting TE three, and amending TE four to require that the private drives now become private streets and eliminate the need for any variance. Let's see if we have a second for that motion. Commissioner Gauvine has seconded that motion. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. We're now in line for item six.
Item six is Case SP 573, application for a special permit to operate in automotive and equipment automobile dealerships and mall use in C3, located at 9701 Northwest Expressway.
Thank you. Is there an applicant present?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Peter Tora, 35 Putnam Road, East Brunswick, New Jersey. I'm representing WMK Inc., Mobility Works. Thank you for hearing me. So Mobility Works has recently come into a property that's been available to us. It's currently operating as, I believe, Bob's Tractors, and we'd like to move into that property that current tenant is going to be moving out, so we filled out documents with our, with the landlord, and in order for us to operate correctly on this property, we would actually need a special permit to operate as an operator. Technically, we operate quite different than an automotive dealership. We are a wheelchair-accessible van organization and dealer group, but what we do is we modify vehicles off-site, that's all done in Ohio, and we have 98 locations across the country that currently sell those vehicles, repair those vehicles, so on and so forth. The reason for applying for a special use permit for an automotive dealership is because we do need to operate in order to register the vehicles for our clients, repair said vehicles for our clients, and it makes it a lot easier for them to do it all in one location rather than sending them to multiple spots.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Claire, this is in your ward. Would you like to begin our discussion?
Yeah, I've reviewed the application and no real concerns. I think this is a good location. You're seeing more and more, you know, in proximity to the turnpike, you know, more of these types of developments, so I don't have any concerns with it.
Cool. I agree. Any other questions, comments from commissioners on this? I have no one signed up to speak on item six. I think we're ready for a motion if there's no questions, comments on item six. Go ahead, Commissioner Powers.
Is the special permit tailored to this use? Not sure I would want to see a full-blown car dealership. It's not that big a piece of property, for one thing, I suppose, maybe that would limit it, but sometimes smaller car dealerships are worse. Is the special permit tailored to this use of the property?
It's saying automotive dealership, so when you say use, are you meaning?
Any kind of a car dealership there?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. Yes, the special permit is just for passenger autos, what they're doing. The pud next door, it was approved not long ago, also allows auto sales. We didn't see a concern with that at all, with this location at all.
Tractor Bob, is he going to sell tractors?
I'm sorry?
Tractor Bob going to sell tractors?
It's, it won't be a Tractor Bob's, that was confusing to us, but Tractor Bob's had a permit that was already approved, they have a CO issued, and the materials that the applicant provided were from, were from that permit. So they'll be obviously adjusting the signage, and Tractor Bob's was permitted as retail.
Gotcha.
I would say they do require all machinery and facilities be located within an enclosed building, requirement that, or require that certain areas be screened from view of surrounding neighborhoods, if that helps.
I'm out of ideas on how to, how we could specify, thank you, how we could specify to that level of detail without saying, "We're only giving this to," it's not Tractor Bob, so I apologize, but, you know, Tractor Bob's replacement would be the only way that I think we could get at that.
May be able to clarify. Most of our sales operation is done indoors, elements and temperature, most of our clients are very susceptible to those type of items. There will be some vehicles recognized as being for sale outside, very close to the building. We currently will not be parking anything on the grass as it is in, with the tractors and the ATVs are currently on the property, so very minimal. We would never have more in inventory than probably 20 units on the ground, so I don't think it would be very disruptive to the visuals of the lot or to the neighborhood.
I'm not especially concerned about the use you intend to make the property. My concern is more about the rather blank check that an auto dealership special permit might provide to a successor in interest. So, but I, you know, I'm, yeah, I would be happier if it were more tailored to the use that they're making, to provide specialty vehicles, you know, of a certain type that I suppose could be described, but I won't press this point, I don't think. I was just curious as to how open-ended the special permit is.
I'm less concerned, I understand your point. I'm less concerned only because the same uses are permitted next door. I think I would be more concerned if, you know, we were allowing this use and it was sort of on an island, and we wanted to make sure that this particular user, you know, was the only one permitted to do this particular use, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're ready for a motion. If there are no further questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve item SP 573.
Commissioner Claire moves approval of SP 573. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. Thank you. Good luck. We're now in line for item seven.
This is PUD 1486, SPO2, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1486, located at 2600 General Pershing Boulevard.
Is there an applicant present? Is there an applicant present for PUD 1486, SPO2?
Hello, Planning Commission. This is Larry Wallace with Newman. I'd be happy to speak on behalf of it and answer any questions, but basically Aztec Charter School is in the process of building a new wing addition to their elementary school, and enrollment in the fall is going to exceed the occupancy capacity of the existing facility, so we won't have the wing done until next summer, so Aztec has asked that we might be able to bring some modular classrooms onto the campus.
Thank you. This is in Ward 6. Commissioner Gauvine, would you like to begin our discussion?
Sure. I've reviewed the case. I was planning to ask, you're building a new school, but you're already putting in portables. Why, how does that work? Why isn't, why wasn't the addition right-sized? But what you're saying is this is a stopgap.
Correct.
To accommodate that student population.
Correct.
Till the, is there plans to take, to decommission them later, or are they going to be?
To take what?
To take them down or move them away once it's done?
Yes, yeah.
I think that's a good plan. Is that something that we're?
Can mandate, that was about to say. I don't, I don't know that we're.
Can we mandate? Yeah, I think that if that is the intent and you have no problem with it, I think that we should add a TE that says, you know, upon occupancy of the new addition, portable classroom shall be removed from the site.
I'm going to call in legal counsel to provide us some guidance on that.
I'd have to look at that.
So let me, if I may interject, there is, there are two classrooms that potentially could be reused for other purposes if it was so granted, so that would be, that would be a request if needed for two of the classrooms of the four to remain until we get the middle school, high school, and gymnasium built.
Yeah, I, look, I understand the challenges of schools and I don't want to be, I'm still willing to support the application even without that TE. I'd rather have it, but I think we should ask if there's any other comments or public.
Well, I'm questioning, my first question is about our ability to make that requirement, and that's.
Right, I think with the special permit, we're just making sure that it meets every, I mean, this specific plan meets everything that was in the zoning, so I don't know that we have the ability to do that unless it's, I mean, I haven't looked at that closely at the ordinance on that, but unless Sarah knows something different, but.
Sarah, do you know?
And I will say that these are set to the far south side of the property, they're behind the existing elementary school, you won't even be able to see them necessarily, but I just do want to, I want to share that we have completed the design of the middle school, the high school, the gymnasium, and the auditorium, but we haven't started construction on those yet, and so two of the, two of the classrooms have been purchased so that we hope to be able to maybe use those in the future until we get the rest of the campus settled. The other two classrooms would definitely be gone by, by next summer when the wing is complete.
So the issue is, can we, through a specific plan, impose this requirement that is outside of what was required in the zoning?
I would say no.
Well, for, based on that, if, maybe we should ask if there's anyone else who wants to speak or if there's any other commissioners, but I would be prepared to support the application without that TE.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak on this item. I think we're clear. Commissioner Gauvine?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of PUD 1486, SPO2.
Commissioner Gauvine moves to approve of the PUD 1486, specific plan, 02. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item eight. Thank you.
Item eight is Case PC 10887, application to rezone 12825 North County Line Road from R1 and PUD 1763 to R1Z.
Hot mic today. Sorry about that.
Well, good afternoon. Jason Spencer, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, here on behalf of the applicant. So this application is to rezone approximately 42 acres from the current PUD and R1 zoning to R1ZL. We think this is consistent with the surrounding area. You have to the north, multifamily and R1ZL zoning, to the east is R1ZL zoning, and to the south is tract of a PUD that allows for a modified R1 with 40-foot wide lots. R1 with 40-foot wide lots, and then the west is the turnpike. So staff has recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward One. Commissioner Claire?
Yeah, this just, just be a continuation of current development that's already in the area, so I don't have any concerns.
Any other questions, thoughts, comments from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak on this item. Excellent. Think we're ready for a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval of City Council, item PC 10887.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PC 10887 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you. Now in line for item nine.
Item nine is case PC 10888, application to rezone 12905 North County Line Road from R1 to R2.
Thank you.
Same application.
Yeah, you're ready.
Jason Spencer, yes, Jason Spencer, once again, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, on behalf of the applicant. So this is the northeast portion that was just voted on, just northeast of it. It's eight acres, and we would request to rezone it to R2. We believe that a small two-family tract would be compatible with the surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Claire?
No comments. I think it's good that we're providing some housing options in our community, so I'm ready to make a motion if there's no one here to speak on it.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? No one has signed up to speak.
All right. I'll move to recommend approval of City Council, item PC 10888.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PC 10888 to City Council. The motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Thank you. Now in line for item 10.
This is KC 7559, preliminary plat of Tuscany Lakes North, located west of North County Line Road and northwest of 122nd Street.
And for the last time, Jason Spencer, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard. This is the preliminary plat for those two tracks. It also includes a little bit of the portion to the south that was included in the previous preliminary plat, just small changes to the layout, so staff's recommend approval. Be happy to answer any questions. We agree with all the TEs.
Excellent. Commissioner Claire?
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no one here to discuss...
Any questions, comments from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak.
Move to recommend, to approve item C 7559.
Commissioner Claire moves to approve C 7559. The motion has been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now in line for item 11.
Item 11 is case SPD 1524, application to rezone 9102 Northwest Expressway from R1 to SPD 1524.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Kelly Work. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants and request that you recommend approval for this SPD. This item, as you may recall, was before the commission, at the May 25 meeting, there was a question, some issues arose with regard to what would be permitted on the issue of paving, and then also we had some discussion about the screening and landscaping of the south boundary. The front portion there, that fronts on the Northwest Expressway, is already zoned to permit commercial uses, as are the properties to the east and to the west, so this really just is filling in the commercial zoning that already exists in the area. We have provided to clear up that issue about paving. We've amended the language in the SPD to make it clear that gravel will not be permitted for any of the paving surfaces or walkways or plazas, and then we also have beefed up the landscape and screening buffer with some specific language, providing for two-and-a-half-inch caliber trees to be planted on 20-foot centers along that southern boundary, and along with an eight-foot tall screening fence also along the south boundary. And one of the questions that Commissioner Claire had raised, there are overhead lines that run along that south boundary, power lines, so we have included language that the trees will be ones that, of a variety, that would be, that would be narrow and would not grow into the power lines, so that would, we've added that language as well, so. The TEs have been removed from the previous staff report, so, and we're not aware of any protests, but we would request your approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that may remain.
Commissioner Claire?
I have no further questions. I had some correspondence with Mr. Work last week on that updated language, and I have no concerns with that updated language, so.
I did as well. I appreciate you guys for coming back and doing that for us.
And I'm assuming that that's consistent, that buffer is consistent with the neighboring properties to the east and west, right?
The east and west actually provide for a 20-foot buffer. We have requested that the buffer be 10 feet, but we have, as I mentioned, provided specific provisions for landscaping and the trees and the eight-foot screening fence, which is not available with respect to the PUDs on either side of us or was not provided for. So we, we have a need for that square footage, but we're certainly willing and happy to provide the sort of beefed-up landscaping and taller screening fence, and that was the reason for that.
Okay. And I'm expecting Commissioner Gauvain any moment now to talk about the facade.
You would think, but based on this being a commercial property on Northwest Expressway with the typology of buildings adjacent and in the area, I'm not, ethos is appropriate, all right, in my, in my view.
Well, there is no one signed up to speak on item 11. Are there any other questions, concerns from commissioners? I think we're ready.
All right. I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of item SPD 1524.
Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of SPD 1524 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now in line for item 12.
Item 12 is PUD 1372, SP 02, application for a specific plan pursuant to the approval of PUD 1372, located at 901 South MacArthur Avenue.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Stephen Cooksey, 4727 Gladiators Parkway, representing the applicant. As part of this application, we're proposing an 18-acre truck sales and service center, which is permitted under the PUD. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. There was a statement in our staff report, and I'll call on Barry Lodge with Public Works to address some of his concerns regarding that issue.
Barry Lodge, Public Works. As part of the staff report, there was, and the items that were submitted by the applicant for this item, there was a narrative that stated that detention would not be required. We'd like to request that that be stricken from this staff report. I did have a conversation earlier with Mr. Cooksey. The previous PUD that was approved in 2008 basically just contained the statement that the drainage ways would be, if required, would be constructed and would comply with the city ordinances. The staff report that accompanied that PUD had a statement that detention would not be required. My discussion with Mr. Cooksey earlier was that I'd like to get this taken out of the, out of this staff report, but that as part of their plan submission, their design calculations, if they could show with those calc's that the existing infrastructure was sufficient to handle the additional runoff from this development, that they could make the request then for a waiver of the detention requirement. The current city ordinance requires a detention to be provided for a development over two acres, even if it's not in what is, what's been classified as within the detention-required boundary, which that would be the case with this development. That would be our concerns and requests, and I'll answer any questions, and if you have any.
Thank you, Barry. And just for the sake of clarity as well, this is not changing the underlying zoning. This is not changing any of the rules. This is just about what our staff has written, what was written into the report, but is not necessarily binding, but we're concerned that it sends the wrong message about what the law actually is and what the requirements actually are, so I think it's important that we...
Yes, yeah, that's exactly correct. This is not going to modify anything that was approved in the PUD 1372.
Excellent. I know we don't have a Ward Three Commissioner at this point, so I just wanted to point that out. Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
I just wanted to confirm with Mr. Cooksey that you were okay with, with striking that from item 9.6?
Yes, we're okay with that.
I'd say this PUD makes a whole lot more sense now.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of item PUD 1372, specific plan 02, rather approve, noting that staff's review of the specific plan for the development indicates the proposal is consistent with PUD 1372 master development statement and the master development plan, and also amending section 9.6 of the staff report to strike detention is not required.
Excellent. The Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of the specific plan for PUD 1372, subject to the amendment to 9.6 to eliminate the statement that detention is not required. That motion has been seconded, I hope, by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now in line for item 13.
Item 13 is case CE 1103, application to close and vacate portions of platted streets, alleys, and easements generally located within the blocks east and west of North Hudson Avenue and between Northwest 10th Street and Northwest 11th Street.
I'll wait for Commissioner Gauvain to recuse himself. Good afternoon, Mark Zitza with Johnson &amp; Associates. Before you is a request to close a significant number of alleys in a street right-of-way in Midtown. As part of this project is with the MAPS office and the Family Justice Center, in addition to some land that's owned by the Midtown Renaissance Group on the east side. So what we're seeking to do here is close the alleyways and unimproved street right-of-way to allow for redevelopment to occur. We went to the DDRC. They recommended approval unanimously. We do have two TEs, and we agree to both of those. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is, let me confirm, this is Ward Six, and I know Commissioner Gauvain has recused himself. I don't have any questions. Are there any other questions from commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak on item 13. Is anyone ready to make a motion? Commissioner Powers has moved to recommend approval of CE 1103, and that motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now in line for item 14.
Item 14 is CPA 2023-3, consideration of a proposed MAP amendment to the conference of plan designating urban low intensity for a newly annexed 160-acre parcel located near the southwest corner of North May Avenue and Northwest 206th Street.
I'll wait on the presentation.
Okay.
There you go. Bonne nuit, Juan Cortez, for the Planning Department. So CPA 2023-000.
It's her fault. I can verify she was not touching the microphone.
I'm sorry. I shouldn't have known that.
Great way to start. You have everyone's attention, for sure. Guess we lost the mic.
If you want to stop for just a second, he's got a new microphone for you.
Perfect.
Do we need to start again, or?
No, you're good. You can start where you are.
So the water is adjacent to the, to the site. There is sewage available adjacent to the site, too. Emergency services, the site is projected to have rural response time for emergency services fire. The site was recently annexed. The provision of water, sewer, emergency infrastructure, and services in the vicinity is appropriate to designate the parcel Luda as urban low. The owner proposed to extend water and sewer services to the subject parcel. The urban Luda designation is consistent with development and density patterns found in the immediate vicinity of the subject parcel, so the recommendation of the staff is to approve the CPA.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from commissioners? This is Ward Eight, so I don't know if you want to go first, Commissioner Noble?
I'm discussing with staff, and I see no problems with it, so if there's anyone here to speak on it.
We have no one signed up to speak on this item. Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of CPA 2023-00003, proposed MAP amendment to comprehensive plan.
Excellent. Commissioner Noble has moved to recommend, moved for approval of CPA 2023-00003. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 15.
Item 15 is case PC 10889, application to rezone 2743 Northwest 199th Street from R1 to R1ZL.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. The application before you is for an R1ZL zoning. It's worth noting that to the south and to the southeast are both tracks that are currently zoned and developed as R1ZL. We did retain the R1 on the balance of the perimeter, and this is the site that just came in under the urban low comp plan, so staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Noble?
I don't have any other questions. It's R1ZL, right next to R1ZL.
Agreed. Any other comments, questions from commissioners? I have no one signed up to speak.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve PC 10889.
The motion, Commissioner Noble has moved to recommend approval of PC 10889 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Gauvain. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 16.
This is case SPD 1532, application to rezone 7701 North Council Road from R1 and AE2 to SPD 1532 and AE2.
David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is for an SPD that would allow limited commercial uses. We have, because of proximity to the neighborhood, already included the provision in the SPD that drive-through speakers shall be located no closer than 150 feet away from residential uses. There is one TE that we agreed to.
Thank you. This is in Ward One. Commissioner Claire?
I have no, no comments or questions, so if there's anybody signing up to speak or other commissioners have questions?
Just curious, David, on the buildings that are going to be adjacent to the residential, I'm assuming that these are the, is this the office? I'm assuming that these are the, is this the office, are these the office uses that are going to be closest to them?
Yes.
Okay. That's all that I had. Any other questions, comments? I think we're ready.
All right. I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of item SPOD 1532.
The Commissioner Claire has moved to recommend approval of SPOD 1532 to City Council. That motion has been maybe seconded? Seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 17.
Item 17 is case SPOD 1533, application to rezone 1915 North McKinley Avenue from R1 and Gatewood UCD to SPOD 1533.
Once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is an infill project over by Gatewood that would allow the construction of a duplex. What you see here is what we're wanting to build. There are two TEs. We agree to TE2. TE1, I guess what we're asking for is to strike it. We believe that the manner in which we've designed it will allow for more green space, more landscaping, and a more attractive design along McKinley rather than a traditional circle drive, which our understanding is would be permitted and would then require a significant more amount of paving, which we think would be a worse design. So what we're proposing are two driveways, each of which are long enough to have in tandem two cars and still maintain the ability to have the sidewalk clear of cars. But instead of the big sweeping concrete, it's connected by a pedestrian pad right there. And again, we believe allows for a more visually appeasing view than a traditional circle drive. So I'm not sure how to do TE1, other than we would ask to just strike it to allow what you see before you to be built. And again, TE2, we agree to.
Excellent. There was also an issue in the staff report on page 7 regarding private easements. Did you have thoughts on that, David? And I, I know Destin's coming up.
I talked to Destin before. So yeah, at some point, per me, we're going to have to deal with that.
Okay.
So whenever we go to build it, we'll have to deal with that.
This is in Ward 6, Commissioner Gauvain.
I've reviewed the case. I, I hear you on the driveways, and I tend to agree. I don't think circle drives would be an improvement in this situation. I think that this is a better solution. And I do have one question on, on the drives that I'll come back to. I didn't, oh, actually, I didn't have anything else on this one. You have your facade regulations written well. So since, since this has come up, I've received a protest letter. I, I have read through it. I don't have issues, like, I don't agree that the concerns raised elevate to the level of not supporting the case. However, the parking is, is somewhat of a concern on just vehicles nearer the street. So the question I have is, would you be amenable to 36-feet drives behind the 25-foot setback? So you get two cars, you can, you can actually fit two cars that aren't, aren't in the front of the house.
Yeah, so we actually have 40 feet clear of the property line. So we have more than adequate space to have two cars parked in tandem and still be outside of the area where a sidewalk will be along McKinley.
Right. I'm trying to move those cars further back past the building line and give the people the ability to actually park without being in front of the house. Because I think that's really the protester's, in my view, more valid concern than the others.
So, yeah, we're fine with that. We did have the opportunity to visit today via Zoom with the protester. One of his concerns is street parking, and I don't know how to address that. They're public streets. People park on public streets. We've designed, we're happy to accommodate what you're asking. We've designed it in a manner that gets all the cars clear of, you know, the, the public way. But if you're wanting to push it a little further back, we don't have any problem with that either.
I, I think, you know, at the, on one hand, I want to reduce impervious surface as much as possible. On the other hand, I want to be respectful of, of people's appreciation of the streetscape and not having, adding more cars that are always right by the sidewalk. So this gives them just a little more space. And I would also offer that if the connection between the two drives was added simply to appease the language in TE2, I, I don't think that's adding anything to the development. And I think that, that if, if you actually have the two, the, a little bit more distance to drive, you don't need the connection between the two sides. However, if, you know, that's desirable to the development, then I guess that's okay.
We'll take a look at it. What, what language do you propose as it relates to what you're seeking to do?
The only thing I would say is strike, or sorry, let's replace TE1 with language that says drives shall extend 36 feet beyond the building setback line, which is 25 feet past the property line.
Provide that.
Could I suggest, I understand, and Sarah maybe, or David, there might have been a little bit of concern about where the property line actually is in the setback. So maybe would it be, I might suggest that we say something about just putting parking behind the facade. That way, if you move the building at all-
Parking shall be permitted to be behind the front building line?
Yeah. Would something like that work?
Is McKinley Avenue a section line, or do we know?
Is it what?
No. It's not a section line, then it's probably going to be outside the-
Yeah, so maybe we should add language that-
-statutory right-of-way.
Parking shall be permitted to be beyond the front building line. Is that-
I think so. It would work.
Parking shall be-
Parking shall be required to be beyond the building setback line.
Well, required, there, there undoubtedly will be a time in which a car is not behind the front building line.
Yeah, like any house, you have guests over, that's understood. But I'm trying to give them at least the ability to, day-to-day, the owners or tenants of the house can park.
We're, we're regulating the paving, right? So the question is about the length of the paving, not about where they're parking.
Correct. Well, but the problem is, all of a sudden, you're going to eat into all the, the yard space.
The backyard.
Yeah, you've destroyed the backyard. If you require the parking to be behind the front building, you're going to have, you're going to double up and have four cars on, you know, either side, two cars, so two on either side.
What's that, what's that front setback, David?
25.
25? Yeah, that's pretty big.
What I'm trying to say is that there will be four cars on the site. So I want them to be far enough back that they're not a nuisance in the, you know, front of the house on a day-to-day basis. No, I'm not trying to regulate guests, and yes, people might park by the sidewalk, but-
I don't think we can get both of them behind the front building line. But allowing the, the paving to, and parking to go past the front building line, I think, gets where you're trying to go.
What do you think, Jeff?
Well, you know, if we allow it, you're not going there just because you can allow it.
What's that?
If we allow it, you're not going to build it that way just because we allowed it.
I mean, if you do that, I think the product is worse, because now you're, you have units that have no yard space to accommodate cars in the backyard, essentially.
Can I ask a question? Are, is your issue that people are parking in their own driveways, but in their front yard? You're trying to get, I, I cannot get behind that.
Don't understand what-
I know, I understand, I think, if that's what you're saying, that you, you want people not parking in the front space of their house, in their driveway. You want them parked back behind, I live in a neighborhood where people park in their driveways wherever they, you know, have space, as well as in the street, and, you know, I-
Glad they're not in their yards.
Yeah.
That's what we can ask for.
If I might speak for the reasons staff and the TE, you know, we could have worded it better, but our concern was a few, few things. This is a duplex, and it is predominantly, it's a lower-density neighborhood, so our concern was having four cars in, you know, in the front of the house. And one way to maybe alleviate the situation is to put the car, at least some parking behind the facade. People are always going to be able to park in their driveways that, you know, but you're giving, this property now has two driveways instead of, you know, one. People, you know, you can, depending on what the driveway, driveway, fit four cars in there, and, you know, that's okay to some people. Some people really don't like that. That's a matter of taste. The, the key thing is that you keep, that you keep the sidewalk clear of, you know, cars, of course, you know, that, for pedestrian movement. The other concern we had is that we weren't sure that, that the property line and the setback was, was correct, and wanted to be able to have them to move up if they needed to. Their, the, the homes next to them seem to be pretty close to this, to the street, so they don't necessarily need to be that, set back that far. And if the desire, if the Commissioner's desire is to have, like, maybe at least one space behind the facade, that way, you know, you have 18 feet, a standard kind of parking stall length that could start at the facade and go back, then at least you have some parking that's kind of, you know, out of the front yard. I think that's what he was-
But then that goes back to what, but that goes back to David's suggested language, then.
Allow parking to be behind the front facade.
Well, and, and-
For allowing it, not requiring it.
Sure.
Correct.
Designed to do those things.
I'm not required.
40 foot.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I don't want to require where the cars can park. I want to require where the paving is, so they have the opportunity to park in that spot. And I, and maybe 18 feet is, I mean, at least that gets one of the cars out. You know, the, the worry for me is, this is a duplex, two bedrooms, you could have four people living there. You could have, you know, renters or, or, you know, so I want to provide adequate space for cars to stack up for both units. That's all, without being, what, you know, because you say there's enough room to not block the sidewalk, but oftentimes, people have big cars, and they do, so.
So it sounds like requiring paving, providing for the extension, I guess, of the driveway beyond-
Allowing the pavement and parking to go beyond the front building facade.
But I think we're at requiring, or I guess that is the question for the Commission.
My recommended language would be, the paving drive shall extend, well, I started with 36 feet. I'm willing to negotiate down a little bit, because I don't want to add impervious space, so the, let's see, drive shall extend a minimum of 18 feet. No, 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 we don't need to say the minimum. Drive shall extend 18 feet beyond the building setback line.
I think that's fine.
That's the, the dashed line that you see at the porch, that's 25 feet.
So what that would be-
Another 18 feet, so that gets at least one car wholly back behind the front facade of the house.
That puts you 60 feet from property line of paving.
It, it looks like they've got probably 25-foot of statutory right, right-of-way in the front of it. Just guessing by the, the staff map, but-
That becomes really three cars, is what you, it's a tremendous amount of paving, I think, for a small lot. You've now allowed for three full cars on both sides, clear of sidewalk. Again, I think it's a worse product. I know you've taken the backyard space away.
Yeah, but I've taken cars out of the public realm, which is what people are complaining about, so.
Well, and, real brief, so the guy that, that has protested, the house he has to the south, he's an investor, he runs it as an Airbnb without a special exception or of adjustment for what it's worth. People park in streets, and people park in driveways. I have a house, four houses down from me. It's a single-lane driveway. They have three adult children that live there, and there are cars in the streets, the driveway, and, and all over the place. That's where cars get parked. To take yard space away, I think is a worse result, to help an investor that runs an Airbnb to the south.
Let's, let's get- I'm looking at your site plan, and you're already showing pretty close to 18 feet from that line. Like, I'm not adding much paving. I'm probably moving that fence back about six to eight feet from where you're currently showing it at 18. So I don't think that that's an excessive ask. And we're also not regulating where a fence could be. So early on, you know, anyways, yeah, that's irrelevant to here, but-
Where, where are the rest of the Commissioners on this?
There.
With, with Dan? Are we, is there consensus here?
Well, I mean, I, I think in one way, I, I understand what you're saying, that the paving on most houses goes from the street back to a garage. So people are not parking solely in the front yard. They have room along the side of the house to park.
Exactly. I live in this neighborhood, and that's how my whole block is.
Yeah, and so-
And people keep their cars out of sight. It's nicer.
But it, but, you know, and so I, I get what you're saying. We don't really approve of or, or encourage front yard parking, you know? So I think it, it is appropriate to provide space for people to park back of the front facade. I do, I, I agree with that.
I think that's a compromise. It's, you know, we're not saying both cars have to be back. We're just giving enough, so at least you, you know, and I don't think we're taking, you know, much of your side yards. I, I don't have a scale on me right now, but I, I know that you're already pretty close to that 18 feet.
Real quick, since you were asking around, while I'm appreciating it all, I'm slightly the other way, though. I think it's a little too much regulation of what somebody wants to do with their property. I think we're too far in the weeds, and it was a good point. Just because one neighbor wants one thing doesn't mean the property owner shouldn't also get what they want. So I'm, I'm okay with not overregulating.
Well, I mean, we could also go to just say you can't do two drives. I mean, that, that's where we started from. I'm, I'm trying to, I, I feel that this is not out of context for this neighborhood. There's a wide variety of housing types and driveway conditions and, and construction. So I, I agree flexibility is appropriate here, so.
But visually, to me, the two drives make more sense.
In this case, they do. That's why I'm, I'm in support of it. So I appreciate, appreciate your, your position on that. Should we, is there anyone else?
Other thoughts? I think it's time to just vote. Any other thoughts? Let's give it a try on language, Commissioner Gauvain.
Okay. Did you say you were, did you want to debate this further? Are you ready for-
I love debating.
I know you do, David.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna, let's just see where we are. Move to recommend approval of SPOD 1533, striking TE1 as written and replacing it with, drive shall extend 18 feet beyond the set, the front setback line.
Comments on that before we? Okay.
We're, we're fine with that.
Okay. So the motion is to, the motion by Commissioner Gauvain is to recommend approval of SPOD 1533 to City Council, subject to the amendment to TE1 as read into the record. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And, as well as including TE2.
Thank you.
The motion passes. All right. We're now in line for item 18.
Too hard of one.
Item 18 is SPOD 1534, application to rezone 1213 North Kellam Avenue from R1 to SPOD 1534.
Hi, my name's Brittany Portree. I'm with 1213 North Kellam. I own a lot that's adjacent to our primary residence that we would like to build a single-family home on. From my understanding right now, the lot size is too small to build on. And then also, we would have to change the setbacks to be able to build the 1,800-square-foot plan that we have right now.
Excellent. This is in my ward. I am in support. Think it looks good as far as I'm concerned. Any questions, comments from Commissioners? We have no one signed up to speak for item 18. I cannot make a motion to approve, but I would if I could.
And you agreed to both TEs. Do you know what those are?
Say it again.
The TEs, the technical evaluations?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of item SPOD 1534.
Commissioner Claire moves to-
Subject to the technical evaluations.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of SPOD 1534 to City Council, subject to the two technical evaluations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, it brought to my attention, whether you want to do it now or later, that last motion, we might have confused ourselves whether Mr. Box or Sarah wants to tell us what we might have missed. It's up to you if you want to-
Sarah says, as, as amended, it would limit us to the one drive. I think your intent was to have two drives to extend that, the distance you asked for, but as she heard it, it would have only allowed the one drive. We need the two drives.
I was not into, apologies.
Let's just-
Do you want to go back?
Let's vote to amend the previous motion and then read the new language into the record?
Motion to reconsider.
Okay, so I guess we need to, but it doesn't, a motion to reconsider require the- Okay, so I guess we need to, but it doesn't, a motion to reconsider require the, well, the prevailing side can. So first, we need a motion to reconsider. Then we'd have to.
Move.
Move to reconsider.
Right.
Commissioner Claire has moved that we reconsider item 17, S.P.U.D. 1533. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. A vote of yes means we're gonna vote again on S.P.U.D. 1533, just for the sake of clarity. And that motion passes. We're now in line for reconsideration of S.P.U.D. 1533. Can we just get the, I think we just need to make sure that we have the language read into the record as we would like it to be approved.
And I think all we're doing is, I'll take a stab at it. Two 12-foot drives shall be allowed and shall extend 18 feet beyond the front setback line.
Yes, up to 12. I think they're actually designed at 10 feet.
Okay.
Two drives up to 12 feet to extend 18 feet past the front building line.
Let's get the whole sentence.
Shall part is what.
Okay. Mr. Chairman.
I'm so sorry, I'm the, I'm being the picky one. And also, do they have to be connected? Those are all the considerations. Okay.
Okay. One more time.
I would prefer they are not connected. More landscaping in the front.
Okay, so one more time for the record, a whole sentence on what the TE language is.
Okay, we're moving to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1533, including TE2 as written and modifying TE1 to read, two drives of up to 12-foot width are allowed and shall extend 18 feet beyond the front setback line, which is 25 feet.
Sarah.
And, well, I'm just not mentioning the connection.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is our code does not require, I mean, our code does not allow anybody to have two separate driveways. So if you want them to be separate, you should probably put them in this spud that way. In other words, if your house, you cannot have two driveways.
Yeah, is that not implicit in TE1, saying two separate drives of up to 12-foot width shall be allowed?
Where it's separate would be really helpful later on down the road.
Okay, okay.
Okay. So we're inserting the language of separate. I, I wish good luck to the people who are going to reconstruct that TE. We better check the minutes carefully next, next month. The motion is by Commissioner Goveen, is to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1533 to City Council, subject to the amended language of TE1 that I wouldn't dare try to read back into the record. But as read into the record and effectively approving of TE2. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. I've got, I'm stalled on my screen. Is anyone else?
Me too, yeah.
I've voted.
Everybody's voted, I think, it's just not.
Thanks to.
Then it sounds like we, do we need to go ahead and do a voice vote?
No. I'm sorry. This one's a, I don't know where. Let's do a voice vote.
And we're gonna go ahead and do a voice vote on the, again, the motion to recommend approval of S.P.U.D. 1533 with the amended language for TE1 and approving TE2 as written. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Yay.
Commissioner Powers?
Yay.
Commissioner Privet?
Yay.
Commissioner Newman?
Yay.
Commissioner Goveen?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Yay.
I also vote yay. The motion passes unanimously. We're now in line for item 19.
Item 19 is S.P.U.D. 1537, application to rezone 1131 Northwest 5th Street from R3.
Hello, Ken Fitzsimmons, architect, 1300 Northwest 17th Street.
Wayne Parotka, 1805 Northwest 14th Street.
Hi.
Hi, Ken. Would you tell us about your project?
I'm sorry?
Would you tell us about your project?
Sure. Wayne's up here because he had the idea here and the vision to buy this land, to build a house for his family. And that's the primary goal of this spud. We did add language in there to allow mixed use, just thinking about best and highest use, and if we're going for a spud, you know, to write that in. But, you know, his main goal is to build a house for his family there.
All right.
And it's currently, the, as you know, the lot is a very unique lot.
Yeah.
It's too small per zoning, so even though it's zoned R3, it actually cannot be developed as R3. And so that was the reason we're here before you.
Okay, so we're going to R1.
An R1? Well, that's the intended use.
Yeah. We're asking for several residential uses and also potentially some light commercial. The, the idea might be in the future, if it were, for example, a live-work type space or maybe, you know, a commer, office or something of that nature.
Certainly a very interesting area. And I, I have been asking about, this seems heavily industrial, so I was very surprised to see, and now I'm even more surprised to hear you want to move your family in there. Do they know?
Yeah, I mean, it was a compromise, but yeah. I, I think it has, I think the spot has a lot of potential to do something really fun and creative. So, yeah, it's definitely a straight, it's a different spot, but I think it's, I think it'd be great.
All right. Commissioner Goveen?
Well, I'm, I'm in agreement on it is a challenging area. It's a challenging site. It requires some flexibility and special consideration for any developer that wants to have a go on it. And I've reviewed it with the applicant as well and had a couple of points to make. Minor one, which was the, I think we should revise the language on EFS to require a maximum or to restrict it to a maximum of 30% EFS.
We're fine with that.
Sure. And then the, the thing that kind of concerned me a little bit and jumped out was the five-story request and.
I think it's four stories what we.
Is it? Oh, I see, yeah, it is four stories now. Okay. Four stories and 50 feet. Well, I guess, you know, you, I think there was an indication that this is very early stage and there was a lot of uncertainty on what was going to be done here. So on one hand, I'm hearing we're gonna build a house for my, my family. And on the other hand, I'm hearing we want a lot of flexibility because we don't know what we're gonna do yet. So there was a discussion about whether or not a specific plan would be, you know, whether we, if we approve this today, but with the TE, that a specific plan should be submitted later so that once you do get a little further down the road, knowing exactly what you're gonna do, we get a chance to see it, to ensure that it complies with the, you know, the base of this application.
Yeah, we're fine with that. And as you know, being an architect, it's a, you know, we try to be as flexible as possible and we don't want to lock ourselves into a, a very specific plan at this point because once you go down to the eighth floor and you try to get your permit, if it doesn't match exactly, then we're, you know, we're right back here again. And we don't want to have to do a spud twice or have to come back and work through that. So, you know, current, we, the goal is to build a house. But again, if you're going for a spud, you know, the thought is to go ahead and ask for the best and highest use. Their plan is to build a house and, you know, but someday, maybe they renovate that house to allow additional uses. So I'm just trying to look out for them.
Yeah.
In the future.
I fully support that. And, you know, four stories, I also support because it could have ground floor commercial, who knows? You could have the live-work spaces. I like the ideas. I think you have to get creative in this area and it would be great to see the project happen, so. But that's my feelings on it. But I would, I think that it would be fair to see what's being proposed again if you're willing to come back with a specific.
How would, how would that work? I'm, I'm not familiar with when you say you want to approve it, but you want to see a specific plan. I'm not following that.
Go ahead, Sarah. Do you want to talk about specific plan in that process quickly?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. Our specific plan process is really designed for PUDs. We don't have a spud specific plan application. I know that we, we've done them before. I'm looking at Commissioner Powers, but I, we don't, usually with the spud, they, they, the purpose of the spud is simplified plan unit development. The information they provide at the time is what's reviewed at the building permit, so I'm not sure how to, how else to answer that.
Well, if they're willing to do it and we're willing to require it, I mean, maybe the application form can just be changed? Be, be worked out somehow in the future.
Thoughts from other commissioners?
The home sharing use unit, I don't know if I've ever seen that. Does, that doesn't circumvent them from going to the BOA right before.
I would assume it does, right?
Or does it allow them to do it without going to the BOA?
The home sharing use unit.
I would imagine that it does circumvent it. It's gonna be in ordinance. Why would it require?
8300.51.1. I've never seen it before, but it's in there.
Let's ask our legal counsel.
They would not have to go to the Board of Adjustment if that isn't allowed use in here, but they do have to get all the licenses.
Okay.
I'm okay with that specific plan. I mean, I certainly would like it if the applicant is willing, but I'm, it doesn't, for me, it's, it's a creative use. Again, if you can talk your family into moving in there, I, I feel like you're gonna have to stand behind that product because it is definitely a very interesting area.
I've got family behind it.
But I'm open. If the commissions will, I, I'm open. Commissioners, other thoughts on, on specific plan?
Yeah, being ex-BOA, my concern would be parking and stuff, you know, if this place turned into like a, you know, two, three-bedroom home sharing or house condo type deal, which my only deal would be parking. I don't see anything in this plan that, that shows anything where to park, but, you know, I don't.
What I think I'm hearing you say is you, is that in favor of specific plan to review the parking, is what you're saying?
Kinda, yeah. That's my issue.
I would say that would address that. That was my, my thought.
I'd actually like to just strike that use, home sharing use.
Yeah, I'm almost there, too. With the knowledge that that allows them to not go to the BOA and allow them to put those restrictions on them for parking and.
I would ask on that, though, point is, is this like community gardens where there's this convoluted process of getting a community garden approved because it's, it's just not in the code, similar to home sharing? So if it's allowed in the spud, and that's a separate issue of whether you support it being allowed or not, but wouldn't that be a good way to avoid a bunch of adjustment cases of just like?
Not, not that I like all the home sharing that we get to see on Board of Adjustments, but I think that we get to make specific rules to the individual property as, for, for the residents near the property and, and for the owner of the property.
Okay. Would the applicant be amenable to striking the home sharing use? You still have the ability to get home sharing at a later date going through Board of Adjustment?
Sorry, we were having a side discussion there, so we're striking home sharing. I think you're okay with that. Yeah.
I may have missed, I also may have misspoken that. I'm not sure. I'd need to check on that, whether or not, just if they would have to go to the Board of Adjustment if it wasn't their primary residence, if they would still have to, even though it's allowed use. So I could be wrong on that.
Okay. Well, at this point, it sounds like there's consensus, I think, to eliminate the use. So that question is eliminated.
And not that I want Don to have more cases to go over on home sharing, but I understand. So, been there.
Where are we on specific plan?
Make sure we understand. Wayne was asking what home sharing is, and I'll be honest, I, I know, I think I understand it, but I don't know if I know the specifics of it. So it's basically to allow.
Airbnb.
Airbnb, things of that nature.
Yep. You would never be able to. No, no, no. What, what we're saying is there's, there's a process that everyone goes through for home sharing and that's going to the Board of Adjustment. They do, they hear, well, Don can tell you about.
Unless you live in the property.
He's not prohibited from doing it, but he would just have, it would just not be written in that it's automatically done here.
He would have to, right, he'd have to get the license.
License process.
I don't have that in my plan right now, so.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I don't, I don't like foresee, I'm not, I don't, I'm not gonna be trying to Airbnb it out, so I don't have a problem with that right now.
Okay. Yeah, we didn't strike it pretty easy.
And you would be able to if you needed to. Okay, well, I'm going to move approval of S.P.U.D. 1537, including the two TEs as written, adding TE3, which limits EFS to a maximum of 30% of the facade, and adding a TE4, which shall require a specific plan submitted to Planning Commission prior to building permit application.
Okay, that, that one's the one that we're a little bit hesitant to agree to, just because, as you know, I mean, if I spend, we spend quite a bit of time working on this, coming up with the design, you know, Wayne is not a wealthy man. You know, I just, and I don't charge his government fees, but still, trying to be budget sensitive here, I'd hate, you know, to go through the process and then be shot down later on, you know, because, or go back and forth. And we haven't typically, we, as Sarah said, we typically do not present specific plans. Is there a reason why, of all the spuds, that we would have to, I mean, why this is being required on this one?
I think, jump in. I think, first of all, all you're really having to do with a specific plan is to demonstrate that you're meeting your zoning. This is not a design review committee, okay? But I think there's such a broad variety of things that are included in your ask that we'd kind of like to see it when it's done.
Okay. So would that be, how would this work? Is it?
And, and my point is, I mean, it's, I appreciate the submission, but it's pretty aggressive, zero-feet setbacks everywhere, four stories, 50 feet. It, it, it does feel like it, you know, a little more certainty on the gray box on the site would be appreciated.
But I mean, as far as the, the, just the process, so we would, we'd come up the design.
You would submit.
Submit it back through to come up before you guys again, or how does this?
Yes, you would submit a, a specific plan to, to staff and we would guide you through that, like you would for a.
But it's not a revision to the spud, it's just a review of the spud. Is that how it?
A review of your plans.
A review of the specific plan.
Your zoning.
A more specific site plan than what, than what you've shown already.
It's just a site plan, exactly, as well.
Just a site plan, okay.
And so, and demonstrating that it's consistent with the language that's, that's showing.
So, sorry to delay us, there's a lot of people here, but the zero-foot setbacks, I've been shocked we haven't talked about, is that, that's not common, is it? We're doing, what does that mean? That means you're building right up to the street and three different sides and it doesn't matter about people trying to walk or turn or drive or bike or anything?
No, 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 they have sidewalks. They have rightaways.
They can build to the rightway, I mean.
Yeah. Because there's no, there's no adjacent neighbors. It's a, it's an island in, among the streets in an urban area.
I get it, it's a median. It's a median and I don't think we should be allowing people to build houses on medians. I'm not sure why this was left as private property. It should be City of Oklahoma City median maintained as a city. And I, I can't get on board because I'm afraid the unknown here is whether it's safety for the residents, safety for when you get home sharing approved and the people that are there, safety for your own family, neighbors. I don't know. I don't think a house should be built on the median.
Sounds like there's consensus for the specific plan in that case, so.
I said that in part to say that this specific plan thing is not just a non-issue for me and we're just going through the motions. The specific plan to me, I've, I've got problems with the whole thing.
So, so I guess, before we have this vote on the motion that Commissioner Goveen is
requesting, are you then, Commissioner La Forge, asking for us to further amend the application to eliminate the zero-lot line?
Sorry, I'm just gonna vote against it.
Gotcha. All right. So the motion, the motion by Commissioner Gauvine is to recommend approval of SPUD 1537, subject to the existing two technical evaluations, adding a third technical evaluation, limiting EFS as one of the building materials to only 30% of the building facade, and adding technical evaluation four, requiring a specific plan.
Did we say striking the home sharing? I'm sorry.
And adding TE5, striking the home sharing use unit.
Didn't get that far, so thank you.
8300.51.1, if you want, for that, for the record.
Excellent. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. And I'm sure we'd be happy to help you with the process. I know it can be challenging at times, so happy to help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It's gonna be interesting. We're now in line for item 20.
Item 20 is case SPUD 1541, application to rezon 4917 Northwest 10th Street from C3.
Is there an applicant present?
I'm Kyle Now, and I'm with the group here looking for this rezoning. My address is 1801 Bunting Lane, Edmond, Oklahoma. And we initially became here to go from a C3 to an I2 on April 13th, and at that point in time, they were recommending a spud. So we kind of threw that out, and we've been working with staff, got our spud application in. They had a suggestion that we agreed to, and we're here to ask for approval.
Excellent. This is in Ward 3, and of course, we do not have a Ward 3, Commissioner. Does anyone want to take point on this? I recall that we looked at the I2, and we had concerns because of nearby residential uses to the northeast, and so we wanted to make sure we could protect those neighbors, so appreciate the effort to move it to a spud. In my conversations with staff about this, I think part of what addresses our concern is the TE, as well as these limitations to the uses that have been made as well. And so I am now in support based on the changes that have been made, but welcome any questions or comments from commissioners. We have no one signed up to speak. Then I think we're ready for a motion if there are no questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval to City Council of item SPUD 1541.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of SPUD 1541 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Privet. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 21.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 21 is PUD 1922, application to rezon 3500 Southwest 15th Street from R1, R4, and SRODD to PUD 1922.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So this is a joint project between the Oklahoma City Housing Authority and On-Q through some various land swaps. There is going to be the opportunity for the Housing Authority to get an additional net 80 units, as well as all the units that are currently on the ground, getting a facelip or a redesign. So what we're gonna do for the On-Q tract is put it right here at the intersection of 15th and the highway. Because this is in the scenic river overlay, we did have to go to the scenic river overlay design review committee. They did recommend approval of this application to you. We've also gone before City Council on a closing application, and the Housing Authority has gone before City Council on some public monies as it relates to their portion of the project. So we've worked with a host of folks to bring it to this point. We think it's a wonderful development for all the folks that are there. It is worth noting that we have designed the On-Q. If you look to the south, where there will still be some multifamily that exists to the south, so we've designed this in a way to have a pedestrian connection, so that all those folks that live to the south will be able to access this via foot rather than the street network. So there is only one TE that we agree to, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Gauvine, it's your day. Look, I've reviewed the application, it's a big tract, it involves renovating and adding 110, I believe, units?
Around 80.
Or, oh, around 80 we're at now. So, but we're adding affordable housing and renovating Housing Authority as part of this, so as I understand, the land swap deal with On-Q is what makes it all work, and, I mean, I'm in support of the application, so I don't have any other concerns or questions, so I'll open up to other commissioners. I think it's fantastic. I think that I'm glad to see we found a way to make this an even more productive use, and so I'm in strong support after meeting with the applicant. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Sounds like none, we have no one signed up to speak on this item, I believe.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll move to recommend approval of PUD 1922.
Commissioner Gauvine moves to recommend approval of PUD 1922 to City Council. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes with the technical evaluations. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 22.
This is PUD 1955, application to rezon 6501 Southeast Air Depot Boulevard from PUD 1406.
Good afternoon, once again, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Dick Tannenbaum is the applicant, he is also here with us. What is before you is an application for a multifamily project. It is consistent with a lot of recent developments that you've seen in the area, predominantly because of all the great success that we have had as a city with Tinker and Boeing and all of the things going on there. You may recall a similar development that Mr. Tannenbaum did, about a mile or mile and a half to the south and the west, that was on Sooner Road. That initially had some pushback from various levels of staff. It's now fully built, if you've been by there, it's a beautiful redevelopment of that property, and, again, is full of people that are working and adding to the city at Tinker and all those surrounding areas. So if you're familiar with Mr. Tannenbaum's projects, they are all heavily amenitied, they're, when they are constructed, they age very well, and this is simply another one in the long line of projects that he has brought online. And again, it's important, I think, that projects like this continue to support all of those efforts at Tinker. That is perhaps the most important economic vehicle that we have in the city. A lot of folks that work there have kind of different type of employment arrangements where they aren't long-term, they may be here on one, two, three, four, or five-year contracts, so the ability to have housing that is nice, but they don't have to purchase, is important, as we continue to attract talent to our market. So there are no technical evaluations, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is in Ward 4, Commissioner Privet.
I'd say, David, how much is your specific plan gonna change?
What's that?
From here till now? Your specific plan, if I remember right, the one across Sooner, that was the main issue, was when it came back. I don't think I was there for the initial zoning, but I was there for the specific plan. I know you can't just say, yeah, we're gonna do.
But we don't ask for a specific plan, we're showing you what we're gonna build. The demand is there, we're ready to roll, we're not asking for a specific plan.
Will you be providing one, though, I guess?
I'm sorry?
Or we don't have to, or do you?
No.
We believe we provided enough detail that a specific plan is not required.
And the PUD language in 9.7 on page 5 eliminates the requirement for that.
Ah, yeah, I'm a two, I didn't realize that one. That's my only issue with it, honestly. I'd like to see, you know, the final development before. I know, you see it there, but, yeah, that's a pretty picture, I understand, I've seen lots of them.
What if it differs from the site plan? We would be required to come back with a specific plan.
Well, yeah, if it differs quite a bit, yeah.
If it differs, we'll come back, but my understanding is we're ready to go, this is, this is what we're building, this is what they've had success with over.
If we can put that language in there, that this is what's being developed, otherwise we need a specific plan?
Yes. So if it differs from this site plan, we would be required to come back and get a specific plan approved.
I'm fine with that.
That language sufficient for us to capture what Commissioner Privet is asking? Development shall be consistent with information shown in Exhibit E.
Or whatever. But you come back if you're not ready, right? Like, well, this is generally what we think, but we're not really fully developed, we're fully developed, ready to go.
Yeah, I just want to make, just be sure that, you know, you drop the, it's already rezoned, and you drop it, and then someone else takes over the land and does whatever the heck they want with it.
Sure. You know what, we trust Mr. Butler implicitly, so maybe we'll leave it to the director to make a judgment call on whether or not it's significantly altered from the site design we show you here.
And also, I think we have some people signed up to speak, too.
We do.
Real quick on that one, though, that is an aerial rendering, you're including this site plan, right, in what you're saying? There's a.
This is what we're building.
Well, on the backside of my document, there's an even more detailed, it says site plan, and I could see that one being more easy to compare, as opposed to, as he calls it, a pretty picture. This site plan, I think, matches that.
Yeah, it looks exactly the same.
So I would take it that the TE might read, Commissioner La Forge, that we would require that they meet the, that the actual plan that is executed be consistent with the renderings and exhibits provided in the record?
Rather, I think maybe they prefer to tie it to the site plan, and that's not the site plan, this is their site plan, I think.
Yeah, which is fine.
I'm saying both, but yes.
So what, and what's staff?
My problem with the aerial rendering, there's trees, there's, there's things in there that, that's hard to tie to this one, which is, this we can compare to, we can't compare to where the trees ended up.
And what staff just told me is, they, they push applicants to do what we've done here, and submit enough detail. Staff oftentimes will ask in a TE for a specific plan because there is not enough detail. So here, we believe the applicant submitted enough detail, but if it deviates from that site plan, which is defined as what you have in your hand? Yeah.
I'm sorry, and it says site plan, and I like it, and it's clear.
Okay.
Yeah, my only concern is, you know, they don't develop, end up developing it, and someone else takes over this, this PUD, and does what they want, I just don't want that. That's my main, main concern.
Certainly understandable. Do we want to, any other questions or comments before we hear from our neighbors? Excellent. First, we'll hear from Phyllis Chappell.
Sir, did you, when you initially started, you said if we came in as a neighborhood, you wanted one person to speak?
Sure, if that's, if you've elected someone, that sounds great. Oh, excellent, you've been, you've been appointed, then please come up and give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes to address the commission.
Raymond Opelka, Senior Master Sergeant, retired, 6209, actually, '07, Southeast 61st Street. So if you look at that plan, the left-hand corner where you see 61st Street meets the corner of the development, right there, that's my property that runs north from there, exactly. And so.
But you're north of 61st?
Yes, sir. I am on the north side, that house there, and we have two-acre lots that predominantly go back, so I have, I did a lot split years ago, so that front house and then the house right there, that's my property, all right there. Okay, so I'm gonna be coming up right up to the end of there. We have, we always knew that this property was going to be developed over the course of time, we've understood that, but we have numerous concerns because of the development that's going on, so if I can give you a little bit of backfill, I'm gonna try to make this as quickly as possible. When Air Inc. was built, which is right just under where it says Southeast 59th, I knew you had Boeing go in at the corner of Air Depot, and this is now, oh, gosh, it's McDonald, or not McDonald Douglas, anyway, it's not, that's not Boeing, but that's another aircraft. Then you had Boeing on both sides of Southeast 59th Street. All of the water displacement from those two developments goes right into the creek, and we have been flooded several times since those have gone in. The waters actually come up over the creek banks and up to the edges of our property, and even on several of my neighbors, it's actually gone up to their property. So any further development in that area that would displace water into that creek is gonna flood us. There is, there is no doubt about it. So our major concern is, because we're downstream, my neighbor Phyllis, who you did call, sir, first, she has photographs, our only ingress and egress from there is the bridge that's on Voorhees, that has already been washed out once from flooding several years ago, they had to come in and rebuild it. When they put in the new water line that came from Thunderbird that runs all the way, where you see the subject thing, where it points to the line right there, there's a new water line that came all the way back in there, and that was all redeveloped and everything else, they changed the contour. My property has also started to flood from that perspective, and now you're throwing this development in on top of it. There's so many concerns that we have. We don't know the type of homes, obviously, the type of homes that are going in there, so we're kind of concerned where neighbors are going to be. The water displacement flooding, access to the development, I own, we had Center Street closed, if you could bring your cursor up just a little bit to the corner where my property is, there was a street that was there, that was Center Street, I had it closed years ago, we came before the commission, my neighbors and I, so we own 30 feet, we want to make sure that there is no potential ingress or egress planned for 61st Street. Also, coming in off of Voorhees to the, to the left of that, right in there, we want to make sure that there's not gonna be any ingress or egress. Erosion, flooding, my, and well water, somebody else brought up well water, because 90% of us, the city has never paved our street, we have no running water now, my water line comes in from Southeast 59th, as long as several others do as well, so we don't even have a water line back in there. Majority of our neighbors are on wells, so now we're worried about what's going to be used back in here, whether or not we get contamination to our well water. We have so many concerns. We don't, not arguing about the development, we understand that, we're just want to make sure we're downstream. We don't want our houses floating away. And so I think they're valid. And my neighbor Phyllis has numerous pictures as well that can prove what the flooding damage has done. The erosion problem through that creek is just unbelievable now, because of what's been going in there since Boeing has been put in there. Those are our concerns, and we want those addressed now, before everything goes into play, where then we might have problems later on.
We don't have the ability to obligate the, without a private action between any neighbor that's been adversely affected, and you believe it's the cause of that is something that the property owner of this parcel has caused, that'd be the only way we could address it, without there being some action that we're taking here with the SPUD, if that makes any sense. Because it sounds like you're asking for us to say, let's not vote on this until they fix the issues with flooding. Is that what you're asking?
No, we just want to make sure that they have already made plans for the water displacement, the water dispersment out of there, that it's not all running into that creek. We need guarantees for that, because if not, we wouldn't have a legal fight on our hands, and we don't, we don't want to go down that road.
Absolutely, and so that'd be part of their obligation to address those issues, but I'll let the applicant speak, speak for himself on that.
Yeah, please.
So we'll, of course, have to meet the drainage ordinance, so when we go to submit for building permit, we'll have to submit detailed drainage analysis to Public Works. Public Works will undoubtedly require some form of detention, or ensure that we are properly handling any water. There is a blue line that runs through here, so we are aware of that, we will, we will do what the ordinance and Public Works tells us to do. As it relates to the well water, we will have public water extended to this, so we won't be, you know, tapping those wells, we will have city water to all of these units. In terms of access, we have two access points, one onto 59th, and then one over to Air Depot.
And also, we are, it sounds like, should we be voting in favor of this application, the recommendation will be to, to ensure that the site plan as, as submitted is what is, is what is developed, and that does not have any access off of 61st?
Correct, as well as up Voorhees, there's, if you look at the site plan as it sits, the road does not exist, but if you look into our only egress and, ingress and egress from there is on Voorhees, and then it intersects with 61st. Voorhees goes a little further up, and it's plotted for another road further up in there, it shows on here, but the road is not built, and we just want to also find out what the status is of that, whether or not that's.
So we'd be executing the site plan as, as listed, which does not include taking access off of Voorhees? Nor does it require access from 61st?
Or cross-access.
Yeah, which would be over, which would be further over on that side, yeah, upcoming up in Voorhees, right. Yeah, because the traffic through back to our area would be.
Terrible.
Would it be possible to get you all's information as well, so we can be in direct touching, just in case? Well, that would be something that would be.
We can just, sir, do we have a specific question? We'll let you, I know you all appointed one person to speak for you, so I want to allow you to, if there is a question from a neighbor, let's go ahead and address that question.
In essence, in essence, what it all boils down to is what I had addressed about, you guys are gonna have this, a whole housing development, and so what we're worried about, and it's hard to, I understand, you can't control this, people are gonna use what they're gonna use in their yards, when they buy, and they, and everything else, but we're also about, worried about potential for contamination to groundwater from people using pesticides or something like that in the yard, but that's something that really can't be addressed in this thing, I believe. So we just have to try to cross that bridge with you guys a little further down the road. But did I leave anything? Oh, yeah, yeah. And also, in conjunction with that, there's another, there's another creek that runs through, right through the middle of our neighborhood, that we're gonna have water runoff coming from, and there as well, yes, right through there. And so that's also flooded out, so we, huge concerns about.
So I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Berry Lodge to come and speak to any of the flooding or drainage issues in the city's review, so Berry, could you speak to what factors the city takes into account as this development is going to move forward, what review will be required, all of that, to assure our neighbors that we will be addressing the drainage and flooding issues, what the requirements are from the City of Oklahoma City?
Yes, Berry, excuse me, Berry Lodge, Public Works. As far as the drainage and flooding issues on this, I think one of the points that, that you made earlier, flooding issues that are occurring now, this applicant and this project will not be required to attempt to address those. They will be required to address their, their own stormwater runoff. I didn't have a chance to check on this one to see if it fell within the city's current I didn't have a chance to check on this one to see if it fell within the city's currently delineated detention-required area.
I believe it is.
However, if it, even if it does not, they could still be required to provide detention because of the type of, of development that's going in.
So, when they, before anybody, before construction begins, they're going to, they're going to do a, your, the city will be doing a review to determine whether detention is required and to determine that there is no additional flooding or drainage issues that are created as a result of this development, correct?
We, yes, we will, they, they will be making the request of us to give them a detention determination on whether or not they're going to have to provide the detention for this site. If so, they will prepare that, those calculations and plans for submittal and review to Public Works prior to any building permits being issued.
So, Barry, let's say that this applicant is unsuccessful, and a property owner is negatively impacted by flooding or drainage issues that are created as a result of this development and can prove that. Then what?
If there's anything that, that occurs after the development happens, and, and this could go with what's going on right now, as well as after this project is completed, if, if they experience flooding, they'll report, naturally report that to us. But all of their remedy would be between them and that property owner.
So, it's a private lawsuit?
It'll be a private issue. The city's not going to get mixed up in, in the middle of that. We are going to review their development to ensure that it complies with the ordinances. And anything outside of that would be outside of the city's responsibility.
Thank you, Barry. Any questions for Barry from commissioners?
Well, I don't want to labor the point, but if detention is required, and that detention is not functioning as the detention requirement requires, would they come to the city and say, they didn't put in the detention the way that it should have been? It's not working right. And it would then, then there be an obligation to enforce?
Or the beavers from my neighborhood migrate to north of their neighborhood. Once we take out their dam...
So, detention is required, just to be clear.
It was checked.
It is. It's required. FSB is designing it right now to meet...
Yeah, detention in that area is going to be needed, trust me. I know, I live right there by it.
So, we assume that that will be constructed as design, it'll be engineered and designed, and that there should be no runoff on, you know, that the water should not be increasing the runoff anyway?
Right. That's, that's going to be the issue. It, it will not be increasing the, the runoff. Honestly. There will still, still be runoff. They're not going to be holding all of their water. So, they're going to be detaining the additional runoff from their development. But, but it, it still will discharge, it will go to the creek that it goes to now. It will be, they, they will be limited to what the historic flow rate from that site currently is.
Thank you.
And on that note, detention, if I'm right, the picture that's up right now, is that what is in the far-right edge? Is that the detention? And on the site plan, then I believe I'm seeing a very large rectangle area that's not in use, because that is your detention over there. Okay?
That's an existing pond.
Okay, yeah. And while that looks small, it, if it was flooding, it would be bigger than that little circle, is that right?
It'll, it'll be sized in a manner to meet the city's requirements. Okay, if I may give a supposition to, to this?
One minute, because we, we are over time.
Yep, okay. Boeing also has retention ponds. The, the release of that water from those ponds is not regulated. So, as soon as the water hits it, it starts to go into the creek.
Oh, yeah.
Which causes our flooding. And I'm going to bring up another point, down at Southeast 59th, further down the creek, out of our, just slightly out of our neighborhood, in the last big rain, well, two, two big rains ago, that whole bottom portion, there's a dip in Southeast 59th Street that comes up as you're going towards the back gate of Tinker. And even somebody got, their car got stuck, and even got washed over and down into the creek, and rescue crews had to go through that. So, I'm not just saying, it's not just, it's, it's a bigger problem than just water coming into our yards. Somebody almost lost their life because of it the last time, because of the amount of water that's being retained and released into that creek, because there's no regulation from the retention ponds. It just goes into the ponds, and then it dumps into the creek at full force.
Yep.
Okay, well, I, like I said, I would like to get with the, your information and everything else. We just want to avoid any...
Correct. I mean, current, if it's detention's required, it'll release the proper amount of water into the existing stormtrooper system.
Yes, so, the, the whole purpose of the detention pond is, it, it's not necessarily to reduce the amount of water that's running off of property now, or to direct it to a different location. With their detention pond, they will be required to release the water at a rate from that pond that does not exceed the historic or the existing conditions rate of discharge from that site. Now, I'll qualify this just a little bit. The current ordinance only states that this detention pond has to regulate for the 100-year storm, which is a probability of a 1% of being exceeded, 1%, in a year. It can happen back to back to back to back. I don't know what the design that the engineer will, will bring forward on this. A lot of, a lot of what we're seeing now is the consultants are designing for each of the frequency storms. They're not required to do that only for the, the 100-year storm. They will release the water into the creeks where it currently goes, and it will be at a rate that will not exceed the historic rate. And, and that's what we'll be looking for when we're reviewing that. As part of that process, we will have our city field inspectors will inspect that pond and see if it looks like it was built to the, in accordance with the plans. As a general rule, we're not going to do an as-built survey on that. It's going to be a visual inspection to see if it looks like it's in accordance with that plan.
Thank you, Barry. And I would encourage the neighborhood, visit with Barry, also to visit with the applicant as this process still moves on. Regardless of what this commission's recommendation is, it will go to the city council for their review as well. So, you do have another opportunity to have your voices heard about this issue.
Thank you for your time. And I'm sorry to...
Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a question. Have you met with your new neighbors?
This is the fir, there was no letter submitted, there was no calls made to staff. We weren't aware until just now that there was anybody. But I've got my entire client team here, and they're going to go meet in the hall and talk about it.
Are there other, I, I understand that Mr. Opalka was speaking for the neighborhood, but there are others who were signed up to speak. Do they have a desire to speak? I have Ms. Phyllis Chappell. I have Carol McCage.
Yes. I don't have to.
Okay, well, you signed up.
You don't have to.
And it, ma'am, if you have something different to offer that was not offered by Mr. Opalka?
Well, I own one of the properties...
And could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Carol McCage, 6113 Southeast 61st. I also own 6212 Southeast 59th Street. The creek runs through that property, and years ago, the kids could walk through that property. You walk back there now to get in that creek, and it's because General Motors, all the companies that are built up down there now, you guys have allowed them to bring in thousands of tons of dirt to build that up, and it all washes down on us, goes through that creek. I have one picture of my water line that used to go through there. We ran a, one of the ditch witch things, had the permit from the city, because my property on 50, or on 61st Street, my water line runs all the way to 59th that I have to maintain. The water that came through there knocked that water line out. We had to get one of those, the guys that goes underneath the creek to put the water line in. I still have that water line that was shooting across the top. It's only about maybe six inches under the dirt right now. And if you go down there now and jump down in that creek, you can't see out. That has allowed all that to erode all these years. All the tree stumps, we've had huge trees, the roots get washed, all that stuff gets knocked down. We have to go out there and clean it. And yeah, I realize the city's not at fault, but you're allowing all those companies to come in, and all that wash water is coming down through there. It is not natural. This is all man-made. This is what y'all have allowed.
Thank you, Ms. McCage.
Thank you.
I also have, and I'm, I, I don't know if that's Teresa Gerald?
Phyllis Chappell.
Phyllis Chappell.
Hi, Phyllis Chappell, 6201 Southeast 61st Street. I've lived there since 1987, and we were here previous when Boeing came in. And we heard the same thing from the, from the city about the 100-year flood, but they don't live there, you know? We don't hardly see any city people out there at all. So, I went this morning and took pictures of the creek, and it's less than two foot from Southeast 59th Street, just east of Voorhees. So, and you can see some of the concrete buckled, so pretty soon, it's going to be under 59th. So, it's, we're just saying, it's not just about our homes. We've lived there 30 years or more, some been here 50, 60, but it's our homes. And so, we're allowing, excuse me for being disrespectful, but to me, greed taking over because they're taking the land that the water is absorbed by, and they're putting concrete. So, that's where the water's coming from, is there's no more land to absorb it. And the trees are gone. My husband and his dad used to hunt quail. It was 160 acres of cattle and ponds. And of course, you can't hunt in the city anymore, but it's not there anymore. So, I appreciate you listening, and I hope you take our concerns heart. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize if there is, if I mispronounced his name. I, I believe it, it's Teresa Gerald. Is that correct?
It is.
Okay. I appreciate the comments made by all of our neighbors. Appreciate, Barry, you sharing what our existing ordinances require. This commission does not have the authority, as much as I empathize with all of the thoughts that have been shared about the flooding. If it were my house on 61st Street, I'd be sitting where you are, and I want to be very clear about that. But this commission does not have the authority to create more regulations regarding how we, how we address the abatement of flooding and, and drainage issues. We only have the ability to decide yes or no on these, on, on this development and, and what's within our actual purview. But setting those ordinances and standards and regulations with regard to that is, is the city council's obligation. And what it sounds like to me is that our ordinances are not sufficient to help us address these real issues. And so, I would encourage you to, to visit with, with Councilman Stone. I know that this is going to city council, again, regardless of whether we say we vote to recommend approval or not. And I think it is time to have some serious conversations about the insufficiency of the regulations that Oklahoma City has with regard to these issues. So, I do apologize that we don't have that authority to get at the heart of that, besides just saying no to any development. And we do want to continue to see our city prosper and grow, but of course, in a responsible and respectful way of the neighbors we already have. So, our, I, I hate to say that our hands are a bit tied, but, but they are. And I, I would strongly encourage those further conversations with the city council. I'm happy to join you. So, if I can, let me know. At this point, the question is, are there any remaining questions, comments from commissioners?
I will say that I live on the other side of the highway, and we have the same issues with drainage. We have a large detention-retention pond, whichever one you want to call it. I know there's differences in both of them, but it's, it's a problem. It, the city maintains up to the concrete, you know, where they have their, their creek, and that works really well. But when it turns into no concrete and no clear way, clear path for the water to go, it just goes where it goes. And I, in my opinion on this one, though, I, I, my non, you know, civil engineer opinion, the drainage should be improved by it, by being able to maneuver it into different directions and not just straight west. That's what I would hope anyways.
I, I would agree, though, that, that these large industrial sites with a huge metal box building and a huge swath of concrete, that's a much bigger problem than a residential development like this, that they, they use the roads to channel water and they can distribute it.
Carbon gutters and, yeah.
And, and maybe, you know, city staff should really think hard about allowing fee in lieu of detention on some of those large industrial sites, more so than, you know, that's not in our remit either. And a lot of people go in for permitting, and they get out of the detention requirement in some cases. I'm not sure exactly how that works, but...
If we didn't have carbon gutter, our whole neighborhood would be underwater. No doubt about it.
All right. We are, I, I think we're ready for a motion.
Yeah, with all that said, I, I like this development. It's good for the area with the, you know, stuff coming in, and Boeing, and Pratt &amp; Whitney, and it's good, affordable housing. And I, I really do hope that it can help the drainage problem, and I think it will. If the developer could do, you know, anything to keep it from, anything he can do, keep it from running west and go north as quickly as possible, I think would help. And then, I believe, I've looked at drainage plans, and I think it goes under and into Tinker, and, you know, there's all kinds of cra, for my house, it goes under the highway and then pops back up, you know, on the other side, and then continues in the same creek. But like I said, hopefully, this will direct some of the water away from their houses. And, because I can see definitely, you know, all the concrete on the east side, why that would be, definitely be a problem. So, with all that said, I will recommend approval to city council, to PUD 1955.
And then, we want to add the technical evaluation.
The TE, yeah. Which one was that, sorry?
The TE to, to require...
Oh, yeah, the, the specific plan. Yeah, if it changes from the plans we have in this PUD. Hold on, do I need to say that?
Clear, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Suggestions?
Yeah.
I'm sure he doesn't even want to.
I mean, what I had suggested is, I mean, leave it to the discretion of the director, that if it's a significant departure from the site plan, then it will require a specific plan. Got, I mean, somebody's got to have to be the decision-maker and...
Yeah, yeah.
Could use the language substantially complies. I mean, that's pretty typical. If it substantially complies with, then it's fine. If not, it'll need to go back.
Can we, can someone give me a complete sentence?
Complete sentence.
That says...
Site plan, that a specific plan shall not be required if the development significantly complies with the site plan as included in the PUD.
I agree with that.
Commissioner Privet's motion is now to recommend, to approval of PUD 1955 to city council, subject to the technical evaluation language as read into the record. That motion is in need of a second. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Goveen. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. And would encourage our neighbors to visit with the applicant as well.
Yeah, definitely, between now and council, for sure.
And we are now in line for item 23.
Item 23 is case PUD 1956, application to rezone 12266 Woodland Hills Drive from PUD 77 to PUD 1956.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Ford Drive, on behalf of the applicant. This is an interesting site. You may recall, it was previously zoned to allow an RV park. I believe it was heavily protested at the time. I wasn't involved, but that was my belief from reading the minutes. So, what we're seeking to do is change it from an RV park to a multifamily, limited to 175 units, as detailed in the PUD. It is an interesting spot in the city. Just to the east is I-35, and then just slightly north of that is the interchange for I-44 and the turnpike. So, it's well positioned from an access standpoint. We do have a mix of different zoning types that exist in the area, some industrial and, you know, commercial uses to our east, some duplex and higher-density type residential to our, our west. So, all in all, we do believe it's compatible with the comp plan. Staff agreed with that. There is one TE asking for a specific plan that we do agree to. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This is in my ward. This is in my ward. This is a whole lot better than an RV park, and I am very happy about it, and I am in full support. Questions, comments from commissioners? There is no one signed up to speak.
I don't have any concerns. I'm curious, are there some weird easements? Is that what's going on in the middle of the property?
Yeah, it's like an access.
Yeah.
Drainage, yeah. It's, yeah, there's some strange, right.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Commissioner Claire.
I'll move to recommend approval of PUD 1956 to city council, subject to the technical evaluation.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PUD 1956 to city council, subject to the technical evaluations. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. I believe item 24 has been continued. We're now in line for item 25.
Item 25 is SPOD 1538, application to rezone 8800 North Kelly Avenue from R1.
Yeah, I'm Randy Hill with E.D. Hill, 510 Callcore Drive, Oklahoma City. The property owners are also here, Jesse Escobar and Louis Valesco. This application was originally submitted as straight R2 zoning, which your staff recommended approval of. But there were some neighbors who expressed some concerns, particularly with regarding access into their neighborhood and two-story structures looking down on them. Additionally, the planning commission suggested that we meet with the neighbors and consider submitting a SPOD for this project rather than the straight zoning to address the concerns of the neighbors. Although the neighbors refused to meet with us on this, we did go ahead and submit an SPOD, and we tried to address some of the concerns that they had, as well as some we thought that should be addressed to protect them. A little bit of history on this. This application is for Lot 1 McCurry Edition, McCurry Heights, which E.D. Hill Senior platted for the developer TC McCurry in 1947. The total subdivision consisted of 44 lots on rural-style roads. There are currently 29 residences built in the neighborhood. The lots which were fronted onto Kelly Avenue were set out in the restrictions as being permitted for business uses. The rest of the lots were single-family. Lot 1 is one of the lots fronting onto Kelly Avenue and part of this application. As I previously mentioned, Chairman Pennington tried to set up a meeting with himself and the neighbors and the property owners and myself. Although the neighbors refused to meet, we did put certain restrictions in the SPUD as protections for them. That included limiting the number of structures on the property, limiting the height of the structures on the property, putting restrictions to require that the buildings be constructed primarily of brick, rock, or similar masonry construction, no concrete block. Access to the site would be limited to Kelly only, so we wouldn't have any access into the neighborhood itself. We'd have building setbacks all the way around the property lines, which would create a buildable zone in the middle there, and the remainder would be open space. We'll have guest parking spaces provided. We'll have garages for each unit. Lighting will be directed downward and away from adjoining properties. We've limited the maximum square feet of the structures, and we're going to be well under that. And we've provided a color rendering showing what the duplex will actually look like, and we're willing to lock this in, that it's going to look like this. The staff has recommended approval of this application, subject to two technical evaluations. One of them to require sidewalks, which we're willing to do. The other one is to, they'd rather us have access into the neighborhood, and obviously, we want to try to keep the access out onto Kelly for this one duplex development. It's just going to be two, two buildings running onto a common drive. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. First question's for you, then I have another question for staff. Question for you. If you are on Clover Lane, let's say I live on Clover Lane, and I am driving past your development. From the standpoint of being on Clover Lane, what is it going to look like when I'm facing towards your development?
You're going to see brass, you're going to see a fence, and you're going to see landscaping. And you'll see the back of a home further, further onto the north.
Okay. My second question is for staff. If Sarah's ready. That was about, I don't know, are you all ready?
Sorry.
It's okay. The existing language in the SPOD, the renderings show that the duplexes are facing each other from an access point off Kelly. Does the language in the SPUD require that these duplexes will be facing each other versus facing a street, which I think is typically what we would require, is that they face the arterial or face Clover Lane? So the applicant is suggesting that this rendering is an accurate reflection of what we are approving. I want to confirm that the language that is in the SPOD reflects that. And we can take a moment, Sarah, if you want to take a look, and then we can hear from our neighbors, because we do have one neighbor that has signed up to speak. Yeah. Okay. B.J. Matthews?
My name is B.J. Matthews. I live at 1009 Clover Lane. First off, I want to make it very clear that, yes, we did decline to meet with them. We declined to take off of work, to drive downtown, to pay for parking, to talk about a duplex or two duplexes that we knew we did not want. So yeah, we did decline to speak with him. However, a week after Councilman Pennington spoke with Mr. Escobar or whomever and said that we refused to do that, I believe Sharika told you that we would be open to them maybe allowing us to go to their property, maybe on a day that did not involve interrupting our workday, maybe a Saturday, maybe 6 o'clock in the evening. We would have been happy to talk to them. But inconveniencing us three times like that is unacceptable, I feel. And when it comes to respect, we live in this neighborhood. The whole reason we chose this neighborhood was because of its rural feel. We have a half-acre, that slice of pie, and we love it. And we're not really willing to risk the integrity of that neighborhood for duplexes. And we've known, by the way, all along, for six months, that it was going to be more than one duplex. We're not happy with one duplex, nor are we happy with two duplexes. We have a lot of greenways in this area. We have a lot of wildlife in this area. Yeah, I am, I'm very concerned about driving by it every single day that I live here. And I can say that when I purchased this property six years ago, had there been a duplex there, I would have called and canceled the showing. And you know, half-acre lots in Oklahoma City like this with a single-family home, they're few and far between, really. So I feel like I've got a gem. The whole neighborhood has a gem. We all feel like that. Now, I did go around and I got a petition together. I think you've probably received several letters from many of us, no?
I don't think so. Maybe we did previously.
Well, we did previously, and I've been told that several people have sent many letters to you for this one.
And this one? Okay, maybe I'm just on the wrong item, but go ahead. I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
But, yeah, we have 44 lots in this area, all of them at least a half-acre or more. Of this 44 lots, we have 30 homes there. And then we also have, I believe it's 33 property owners. We have a 94%, more than 94% signage on the petition against the notion of duplexes. We, unfortunately, we just lost one of our neighbors to health reasons. He owns two lots, did own two lots, sorry. He did sign our last petition against this, if that counts for anything. But we're still at 94.26% in opposition to this. We don't want the traffic that it would bring in. We also have a couple of renters in this neighborhood. One of them, we're already beginning to have problems with. We know that rentals are a big decline of neighborhoods. I'm very concerned about our property values, as I think most of us are. We would welcome him to build a single-family home, but we're absolutely against duplexes.
Thank you. Does it, and I just, I noticed you mentioned concerns about traffic. As submitted right now, this application doesn't require that they take access off of Clover Lane. It requires that they take access off Kelly.
Yeah, I understand, but we also know what that really means. You know, yeah, it's a city street. Our, you know, it's a, it's a residential city street. Anybody can go through there. And you know, we're not opposed to this for the sake of progress for Oklahoma City. That's not what it is. We like our neighborhood the way it is. Renters don't really care much about properties that they're renting. They don't necessarily have an investment in the property. We would like to see somebody who would like to live and, and build a relationship with us in this neighborhood. I don't really know what else to say. I mean, I have more to say, but it really comes down to property values and traffic and crime and the 94.26% of the people that really don't want them. I don't want to see it when I leave and come home from work every day. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate the comments. And I will say this, I apologize if I have in any way, and if any part of my involvement in any way has mischaracterized your opinions, feelings, thoughts about meeting or whether or not there should be a meeting. So I own that, and I take full responsibility for that. And I take, and I apologize to the applicant if I have in any way mischaracterized that. But my offer still stands to help in facilitating any conversations that the neighbors would like to have with the applicant and vice versa. I will say this also, that regardless of whether this application...
I'm listening to you because I had one more thing to say.
Go ahead. Go ahead, because you've already exceeded your, your time, but I'll go ahead and let you have just a few seconds.
Okay, so we did call Mr. Escobar and invite him to his own property at a time when it would be a little more convenient for all of us that live there, and he refused to do so. And this was after initially you gave us the invitation to go meet with them, just, just so that you know.
And I appreciate knowing that as well, that there was direct communication in that way. There is still an opportunity for those conversations to take place, but I certainly take to heart the concerns that the neighbors have about a, about a duplex. You never know. I always listen to Commissioner Powers when she suggests that you never know what might happen whenever people get in a room and really have an opportunity to have meaningful conversations about their concerns. And so I still stand by that offer. I'm happy to help, although it sounds like my intervention was non-helpful. So I fully own that and apologize and appreciate your patience with me in trying to do the best I can on this. Questions, comments from commissioners?
I've got a couple of questions here. The rendering that we just received, if I understood this correctly, I believe that the facade was supposed to be primarily masonry with wood accents, but I don't really see any masonry on the facade.
We didn't try to decide what, if it was going to be brick or stone or what in the rendering.
But it's, but it's going to be brick or stone.
It has to be brick, stone. I mean, if I could have put red brick, or I could have put...
Okay.
So we didn't try to make that decision. We left it just white, yeah.
And then the other question I had, the site exhibit shows the entrance off of Kelly, and there's a TE that says access to residential lots shall be from Clover Lane.
So that is for us to decide. I don't know if the applicant is open to access from Clover Lane. I can assure you, the neighbors are opposed. Look by the nods, they're, they're opposed, but that is certainly what staff is recommending.
That presents a bit of a conundrum, because to me, that's one of the main reasons why I don't feel that this is really impacting this neighborhood to the level that is being presented today. It's not part of that neighborhood. They don't need to turn in there. They're not, they have nothing to do with it. They've got fences. It's entered off of Kelly, so... But I'd like to hear from staff why the entrance off of Kelly is an issue.
As well as the question regarding the requirement to face each other.
Yeah, so I'll let Sarah speak to that. Well, I'll, I didn't see anything in the staff report about that, but maybe Sarah found something. So we may want to require, if the commission desires to have the units front, or at least have their architecture, have the appearance of fronting both Kelly and, what's the side street's name again?
Clover Lane.
Clover, thank you. The reason for having Clover be the primary access point, that's just a best practice whenever you have an arterial and a side street, taking access from the side street is just a, from a traffic management perspective, it's the best thing to do. So we typically recommend that. And in this case, it's very little traffic, just a few units coming onto a street that also already has very little traffic.
Yeah.
So from a traffic perspective, it's a non-issue from, from staff's perspective, and that's typically what we do, is we recommend taking access from a side street. It removes confusion from drivers. You know, when you have accesses that are close together, that can sometimes be a problem. So that was the reason for that. And then again, as far as the facades, I do think it would be good to have them face Kelly, to have these, these homes address the streets. That's typically, as you know, the best practice, and we can certainly TE that. I didn't see that. Did you in the, Sarah, did you see that in the MDS?
Sarah Welch, Planning Department. I think that what he's showing would be allowed per the SPOD, but would not, would not be required. When we were just looking at it here, the Clover Lane, we were speaking about how you usually prefer homes to face the street. The issue with the clo, with the, the one on the east on Clover is that's where their backyard would be. So if you're approving the Kelly Road access, I think you need to limit it to one, because it doesn't specify just the one. And then if you're interested in homes oriented towards the street, they probably need to orient towards Kelly, given that design. Does that make sense?
Yes. Does that get at your question, Commissioner Newman, regarding the access from Clover Lane?
Yes. I, I just felt like that the access off of Kelly, considering the traffic, would be better or more appropriate in this case, and would help address some of the concerns.
I, I agree.
We, by having the one access point to Kelly and having the, we've got plenty of parking. We've added extra parking for guests, as well as each house will have its own garage and driveway in front as well. So they'll be able to come back out forward when they go back out onto Kelly. Won't be backing out onto Kelly.
What are your thoughts on the duplexes facing Kelly versus facing each other?
Well, if you do that, you're probably looking at maybe more than one drive. You might be able to make it work with one drive, but it gets a little tighter.
So the MDS language, if I'm hearing Sarah correctly, allows for that current configuration as presented in that rendering, but it is not required. But typically, we do require that there be a facade, the front of the home face the street.
Or address the street.
It's probably pretty well required, because if you look, there's an exhibit in the document that shows the buildable area, and it shows the driveways coming in for the... So really, you couldn't, it is required, even though it doesn't say it verbally. I mean, that's one of the exhibits in the document. It's basically this, only that it's not colored. I've colored it up so kind of you could visualize it better.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, this is such an unusual application. We don't often see people coming to us with requests to construct residential properties on a street like Kelly. We do very much prefer and encourage front-facing exteriors, you know, for the street that the property addresses. But I have much less of a feeling about that here, where that street is Kelly. You know, it seems to me that it would be actually a better design. It does limit the driveway to one in and out off of Kelly rather than two. If the duplexes were turned to face Kelly, they would almost certainly each have to have their own drive. I don't think that's a good thing. It's clear that the neighbors don't want the properties taking access onto their residential street, Clover Lane. And so, you know, I actually think that the design of the build is a good one for where it is.
Mr. Chair, I have a series of questions. That's all right? It's somewhat related to what Jenna's talking about. It's, first question, does the applicant own that property right now?
Does the applicant own the property?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And actually, the restrictions for this area showed that these lots would be available for business purposes.
Okay. My next question is, so to the east of that lot, I believe you're talking about, is another empty lot, I believe. Is it owned by your client as well?
No.
Okay. Where you've got at the bottom of that picture, some bushes, that makes it as if that's not a stub to continue on to the next property.
No.
Earlier, you said you were gonna, we were maybe gonna tie to this design, which this is more of a rendering than a site plan, but I am somewhat concerned, because at least the prior owner, maybe, that your client bought it from, might own several lots along Kelly, one after another. And they also own more than one deep into Clover Lane and the street below it, I believe. So I'm just, that series of questions, just to make sure that there's not more to this, where that's really a stub continuing on to another set of duplexes.
It's not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the SPUD does not allow access from this to these lots. It specifically prohibits that.
Okay. And I genuinely meant those questions, because I couldn't tell for sure, but if it, that would change things a little bit. Okay, I'll leave it at that for now.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Now, if I may, I'm sorry, I want to wait. I thought maybe we'd have more. Now, I can't help but address the neighbor who spoke. Sorry, and our planning directors already addressed some of it. Traffic, I'm surprised to even hear questions. This, on Kelly, this cannot materially affect traffic. To comment about renters not caring about the property, I'm sorry. I'll speak at least for myself, maybe everybody, but I don't know that we ever vote against renters. Sorry, we don't distinguish between an owner and a renter. Whether housing is appropriate here is what I consider, and not whether it's renters. I think some renters care about the property. That actually extends a little further to me, even duplexes. Duplexes next to a single-family is a compatible neighbor. There are people trying to live there. There may be a duplex next to a single-family. So you're gonna hear me in a moment voting for this for all those reasons, so I just want to go ahead and address it. Whether, and Commissioner Powers, I thought maybe you were gonna encourage, again, a neighborhood meeting, but maybe not. You've already tried, so maybe that's not where you were going. I was gonna make those comments, especially headed into a neighborhood meeting, but no. Nobody wants to encourage that, or...
I'm open. It sounds like I should not be the organizer.
And I don't want to be either. I didn't mean, I thought that's, you usually encourage it, but if you think that this one, it's, they've already, we're here and we're ready for a motion, I'll let somebody make that.
It's a non-starter that it's duplex, so, you know.
What's that?
I got it at that. It's a non-starter that it's gonna be duplexes, so a neighborhood meeting would be useless.
Yeah, at least for the one person who may be in, speaking more broadly for everybody, you're right. If others are not open, then there may be no need for a neighborhood meeting at this point.
Other comments from commissioners?
The only thing I think we could do to improve the situation, since we're allowing them not to face Kelly, would be to require street trees at some agreeable spacing along Kelly. But that's getting into completely different issues.
We'll put additional trees if that's what you'd like.
It feels like that would, well, wouldn't harm the development, but it would also address some of the fact that they're side-facing and you're not front-facing. So, you know, a lot of times you see developments with walls, and they're tight like this. I have no issue with the duplex development, and it's more efficient housing, and it's needed, so...
Other questions, comments from commissioners? Thoughts on the street trees? If that's, I guess whoever's making the motion has the opportunity to add any additional of those requirements into the TEs. I'd love to see further conversations. I certainly understand and hear the neighbors' concerns about the character of their neighborhood. I am still a strong proponent of a mixture of housing types. I live in a historic neighborhood that is, that's filled with a variety of housing types. That includes quadplexes, duplexes, and all of that. We have renters. We have some people who don't. I think that that's essential for a healthy city. But I respect the neighbors on Clover Lane and their opposition, and I will vote no. But I do think that this city needs to have a serious conversation with our neighbors about the importance of everyone having an opportunity to have access to quality, affordable housing. And the more that we limit ourselves in our ability to have a variety of housing types, the more people we're preventing from having that same opportunity to live in a quality place. And so, I'm gonna vote with our neighbors, but I really have serious concerns about us not having, not us as a city, taking seriously the need for us to have a mixture of housing types. So I'm open to a motion.
I'll give it a shot, seeing that I am in support and respect your position as well. I will, and we'll just see where we stand, I guess. I'll move approval of item number twenty-five, SPOD fifteen thirty-eight, including TE one, striking TE two, and I'd like to add a new TE two that says, "Street trees shall be placed at thirty-foot centers along Kelly Avenue."
We agree to that.
I've got a second.
The motion is, Commissioner Gauvain has recommended approval of SPOD fifteen thirty-eight, subject to an additional technical evaluation, excuse me, subject to the current one and two TEs, adding an additional TE as read into the record regarding street trees.
I didn't see that coming out of Kamal.
Yeah, strike TE two.
Sorry, strike TE two. Yeah. And then adding the TE regarding the street trees. And then, did we need another TE about it being one access point off Kelly?
Yes, we do.
Yes, so let's add a third TE now.
There's already something in the SPUD that says one access point.
Okay, Sarah?
That's correct.
They're saying that the existing language in the MDS says that.
I really apologize. I was still on the trees and making sure that they can meet thirty foot per center, if we don't want to just count the number of trees, one tree per thirty feet, if that makes sense. But anyway, I'm so sorry. Tell me again.
Oh, you mean to allow space for the drive?
Yeah.
Yeah, fair enough.
Well, it's currently, the code requires one tree per seventy-five feet for both yards. Not every, I'm sorry, one tree per seventy-five feet of frontage. So if you want to just change that to thirty...
Let's do that.
Okay.
That would be, that's a better TE. So, you know, striking TE number two, adding a new TE number two that says one tree per thirty feet of frontage.
And I still second that.
But you're saying about the...
Looks like we need to say that one, only one access.
But we do also need an additional TE requiring only one access point to this development.
There's something in the SPUD that says that now. It says access shall be permitted to only the following. Street access permitted to Kelly only. Joint access parking draw... Well, I guess you could have more.
A single access, adding a TE number three that says, "Single access point from Kelly shall be permitted."
Yeah, we agree to that.
Excellent. So Commissioner Gauvain has moved to recommend approval of SPOD fifteen thirty-eight to City Council, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion has been seconded by Commissioner La Forge. Please cast your votes.
Thank you very much.
And the motion passes. We are, and I would encourage our neighbors to please reach out to Councilman Nice, Councilwoman Nice as well, to make sure that she's aware of your concerns. We're now in line for item twenty-six.
This is PUD nineteen forty-six, application to rezone fourteen three hundred North Bryant Avenue from AA.
Good afternoon. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who's also here with us. This is a unique project in that a portion of the project is located in Oklahoma City, and the northern piece of it's actually located within the city of Edmond. So we are having to run two concurrent zoning applications in front of both cities. We were in front of the city of Edmond Planning Commission Tuesday night, where they granted a recommendation of approval, so now we are here before you. So what we propose is a mix of single-family residential, which would be fairly limited and in the back, and a mixed-use development with commercial, office, and perhaps an opportunity for residential above retail or office. It's along North Bryant. North Bryant is a fully-developed four-lane road, so from a street network standpoint, we think it's certainly compatible and begs of something more impactful that could generate sales tax. We did have a neighborhood meeting early on in the project, before we went before any of, any Edmond or here, and it was a combination of three separate neighborhood groups, as I recall. Lots of the protest letters that you have in your packet did come in prior to that neighborhood meeting. It's my understanding that there has been a retraction of some of the protest letters. We asked if there was a desire for a second meeting, and were told, at least by the HOA representatives, that one was not needed. All of the items that they had asked us to include, we had included in our PUD. And so, we did avail ourselves of the opportunity to meet again, and were told, at least by the HOA leaders, that it wasn't necessary. So I took that as a positive sign. So in terms of the TEs, there are seven of them. I'd like to address them real briefly. I'll start with the ones that we can agree to. We agree to TEs one, two, and five. So on TE three, staff has asked us to update Section nine point four to specify that the required wall along the boundary of the PUD instead of the parcel. We think that is a problem, because one of the things we agreed to do when meeting with the neighbors was, we put a twenty-foot tree buffer here around the residential. What we'd asked to do is put our wall as defined in the PUD at the edge of the disturbed area. What that's going to allow us to do is retain the trees, rather than remove all the trees for the sake of putting up the fence. We think it's a better scenario for the neighbors. It's a better scenario for us, and allows us to keep a lot of that natural tree cover that makes us such a beautiful property. So where we're really talking is here, and then here is an even bigger problem, because it's a pretty significant growth of trees that appears to be part of the drainage way. To get in there and rip out all the trees, to build the foundations necessary for the fence, we think highly problematic. Altering the TE to be at the edge of the disturbed area, I think, is a preferred path for everyone. TE four, we agree, as long as that twenty percent open space is meant to cover the entire development. TE six asks us to have one access point. We think that is a big problem on Bryant Avenue, to only have one access point for all of the different uses that we could have here. What we'd prefer to say is that our access points shall require, shall be required to meet the two-hundred-foot separation requirement. When you have this combination of the residential and commercial, one access point just wouldn't function. It wouldn't work. No retailers would want it. No restaurant group would want it. The city has policies in place for separation requirements, and so what we'd prefer is to have the three and be required to meet the two-hundred-foot separation requirements. Finally, TE seven, specify in Section nine point one seven for which uses or tracks the hours of operations apply. We imposed hours of operations after that neighborhood meeting. The intent was for outdoor patio uses to have that hour of operation. So that's what we would specify that it is meant to comply with. With that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
I'm sorry, you say for outdoor patio uses?
Yes, there's a limitation of hours of operation, and so...
Is there no other outdoor activity that would be contemplated, other than patio uses in our... Can you limit it in that way?
Yeah, I mean, not really.
I don't want to say we're only applying it to patio uses if there's gonna be some other kind of outdoor activity.
No, I mean, there's some, like, general, you know, areas where people might congregate, but the concentration of people on a patio, I think, is what was concerned. And so, applying that limitation to that is really the only use that I see that could potentially need the limitation.
And then, I have a question. I'm sorry if I interrupted you. Did I?
No, go ahead.
I don't have a problem either with the idea of the twenty percent applying to the whole site, unless it's not really enforceable for us, and so I'm asking legal here. Part of this site is in Edmond. They have already gotten approval for what they're proposing from Edmond, I understand.
The Planning Commission recommended approval.
Okay, so if we say the twenty percent applies to the whole site, and now, or at some time in the future, Edmond decides, oh, we don't care if you pave the whole thing, that's in Edmond anyway, what... We can only...
The Oklahoma City piece will have fifteen percent open space.
We can only do what's in Oklahoma City. We can't require Edmond.
Well, but wait a minute. If it applies to the whole site, and at some point, well, in the future, I guess, if it's already built, it's already built. I was gonna say, they'd have to adjust and provide that, find that twenty percent somewhere in the Oklahoma City portion of it.
Right, because we can't bind them to anything that's required in Edmond.
Right.
We can only bind ourselves.
Minimum fifteen percent open space required within this PUD, which would be the Oklahoma City piece.
I don't have any questions. Well, I take that back. Let me ask one specific question. I understand that this was a horse farm before.
It was.
That property owner, is that still the current property owner?
Have you already closed? No, they still own it. We have a contract contingent.
That person is no longer operating a horse farm. They no longer intend to operate a horse farm.
Correct.
They are intending to sell this property and no longer use it as a horse farm.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to be clear about that. Okay, we have several neighbors signed up to speak. I think it'd be good to hear from them. Unless there are questions, comments from commissioners? Let's start with Amanda Bowen.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm William Silk. I live at one three nine oh five Plymouth Crossing, which is in Wellington Park. I'm on the board for the HOA and a retired architect, and with me is Lisa Rogers.
Good afternoon. I live at one three eight one two Plymouth Crossing. I also am on the board. I'm actually the president of our HOA, and we're so thankful to have Bill. No, go ahead. the president of our HOA, and we're so thankful to have Bill. No, go ahead.
I drew the short straw. In other words, we did have a meeting. We do still have some concerns. Number one, we understand that this is a conceptual site plan. It is not tied to that site plan in any way, shape, or form. There is no plating required on track one. There will be plating required on track two, the residential. We have no concern with track two. But with no specific plan on track one and no plating on track one, we have some concerns that should this developer not be able to be successful in finishing the project and it goes to someone else, would they be bound to this conceptual site plan? Or at our neighborhood meeting, we received a well-done slide presentation of the conceptual design concept by the developers. It was well-received. It was for upscale, luxury-type development. As an architect, I know that when the pencil hits the drawing board, a lot of things hit the scrap pile on the floor, and economic reasons come to bear. And so we do not see any of those slides in the presentation made with this application here today, guaranteeing in any way, shape, or form the look or the appearance. We understand there's facade issues that have been proposed. We don't take any exception to those. The street Bryant Avenue floods on even just a gentle rain. Traffic at 40 miles an hour frequently will throw water into the windshields of vehicles going the opposite direction. There is no drainage off of that entire frontage on track one. We have schoolchildren that walk just above. You can kind of see on the top left-hand corner, corner of Simran School. We have middle schoolers that walk up and down Bryant every day. If we have three entrances on the east side, it's going to be very difficult for kids to negotiate people pulling out into 40 mile-an-hour traffic. We would really request that there be a required sidewalk put on the west side of Bryant Avenue by this development. I don't know that you have that in your purview, but it would, it would help a lot of anxious parents in Wellington Park. In addition to the street flooding, we're probably going to get the city request for curb inlets to go to drain that street. It's a pothole on top of pothole on top of pothole for about the last 10 years. So if that street has to be drained, it's going to go into the retention ponds that's shown on the development. And if you look at the southern five acres, there's a larger building shown, potentially proposed to be a grocery store. That five acres will flow off-site into two ponds that are on Wellington Park property. We, we've heard the suggestions and the arguments about drainage and retention, but we would argue that it is appropriate for the developer to put onsite detention for all of track one. We know that Edmond, with their approval, have Title 23, which is their drainage ordinance, and it is going to require them a full flood study just to meet the requirements for only the Edmond portion just above this piece of property. Even if they do onsite detention, they will still be letting out a, a slower volume of water into the two ponds of Wellington Park, but it will surface flow across our property unless they somehow agree to concrete it into the ponds. It's going to cause siltation into our ponds and erosion.
30 seconds remaining.
I'm sorry?
30 seconds. 30 seconds.
Okay. Lisa, what about leaving out? I would just add one other thing. In my perspective as an architect, for the last 48 years, there's an idiom called the law of seven Ps. Proper prior planning prevents B poor performance, and we don't see a lot of proper prior planning with this. We don't have dimension site plan, we don't have floor plans, we don't have elevations. We just got a list of use groups. We've negotiated those to something that we think we can accept. Can I answer any questions?
Yes. So I, I think I want to make sure that I understand the full scope of your concerns. Number one, you're concerned about whether or not the site plan, as stated, as listed at least on your screens that you can view right now, is what we are effectively approving and, and requiring of the applicant based on this application. Is that what you're asking?
Is that, are you approving that?
Yes. And, and so are you, if, if we are to ensure that the language is sufficient in this S.P.U.D. to ensure that we're going to do exactly, that the site layout will be as, as it's listed right up here on the screen, you're fine with that. Your concern is that the language that we have isn't sufficient to bind the applicant to doing that. Is that what you're saying? I just want to make sure I understand. That you're okay with it as long as they do what they say right here? No? It sounds like no?
It's difficult to answer for, for people with multiple different opinions. Many people do not want the project, period. They want to see the horse farm. Okay?
Okay.
For me personally, I understand that this site plan can work based on the slides and the concept that we were presenting. It would be, in my opinion, a good development. However, I don't see anything that requires them to build that when it comes to permit. Am I wrong?
I don't think you are correct, but I want to verify that.
Okay, okay.
And then there are other concerns about the quality of the streets, Bryant specifically, and the flooding on Bryant.
Yes.
And the children.
Excellent.
And the children.
And the children that walk up and down.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for sharing your concerns.
Thank you.
I'll assume that Amanda Bowen does not wish to speak, or you just wanted them to go first? Okay.
My name is Amanda Bowen. My address is 14013 Plymouth Crossing. My property is the very end, right next up to the P.U.D. So the cul-de-sac, right there, our house is that one right there. So my concerns, a lot of those deal with the barrier. And he talked about how there were trees right there, but actually along the south barrier, it is just a fence right now. It's a metal fence. There really are no trees along that. So my concern, right, right off of, yeah, right up there, they're very southward right there. Yes. Yeah, that's, that's my house right there, to the left, right there. That would be my house. So right now, there are no trees. There are some trees, obviously, that you can see to the, to the left, but the trees in front of the houses, there are no trees right there. So our concern is with the fencing. What kind of fencing, I know that they've said that there'll be brick posts, but that it could be either be brick, stucco, or wood on the actual fences. So we would ask that they be either brick or stucco. Also, because of the three entrances, are you going to count those where they will not be having the fire marshal require our cul-de-sac to be a through? That would be a question that I have. We would prefer that there not be any through, that there not be any kind of gate, anything there, that you would just use those three entrances off of Bryant. And the tree barrier, is that going to start at the fence that they create and then go 20 feet in with those trees? Are we going to require a certain amount of trees? What type of trees are those going to be? So those are the current concerns that I have.
I don't believe the regulations specify the type of tree, but I'll let the applicant speak to that. And with regard to the screening requirements, so.
So that's all, those are my concerns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fred Hill?
Hey, my name's Fred Hill. I live in Wellington, in Wellington Park, 14005 Plymouth Crossing. My house is two houses away from the horse farm. So there. Okay, I, I just have a couple of things to say because I'm kind of the Antichrist. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be, but I'm very concerned since this is the planning commission, and I'm concerned about quality of life issues. This is a total residential area. There are homes on all sides of this development, plus a, a school for, a middle school. They're proposing a very busy commercial area right in the middle of all that. It seems that their planned community is not taking into consideration the community. It's only consideration their farm. That's my first concern. Second is just a notation that there are vacancies in commercial areas on the north end of, of this street, as well as the south end of this street. Building more commercial buildings so they can set empty seems rather strange to me, but I'm not an attorney, I'm not a developer, and I'm not an architect. But I am someone who's concerned about the, the neighborhood, and I think this is real questionable for the quality. That's all my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Walker. Sounds like Tom's not here. Carol Low, Lowber.
My name is Carol Labor. I live at 14313 Middle Berry Road. My house sits on the very northern corner. In the corner there, I actually border Edmond city limits, and then the west side is my fence backing up to Hallmark Farms. My husband and I lived in Mesa Park for eight years. We loved downtown until we had our four children, and we wanted something more rural and suburban. My daughter started taking riding lessons at Hallmark Farms. She rode there for six years, so that's actually why we purchased the house, is we could back up to the fence line and enjoy the horses, and she could see them every day. So of course, we are having a hard time with this change, but I understand that change occurs. My daughter, who is 11, wanted me to request, we do a lot of biking to the OC Trail, which is west of there, so we already cross Bryant. Currently, there are not sidewalks on either side of Bryant. I have talked to the city about putting sidewalks in so we can easily cross and do those trails, and the city said it would request, or require funding and take significant amount of time, that there is, right now, they're not able to put sidewalks in. So my concern is with building in these commercial area and all the houses, the increase in traffic and the access to then crossing the street to do the trails. My other concern is it's 30 acres, and there's a lot on those 30 acres. So it just feels like we're packing a ton of houses, lofts, and buildings into this 30 acres. That is, was once pastureland that was the home to animals, pollinators, insects, and animals. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I don't believe we have anyone else signed up to speak, and certainly appreciate hearing the concerns of our neighbors. I share the concerns about sidewalks, as that is the case. It seems like just about everywhere. You can drive through my neighborhood, and we have the same issue of trying to access things and the challenges with that. I think an advantage of a development like this is, at least there are walking trails, et cetera, throughout this development, but that does not necessarily mean this is a place that you're going to necessarily want to go. I'll ask the developer to first speak to the questions about the screening requirements.
Sure.
On that south of the residential area that's listed here, as well as the landscaping. Then let's get to any of the concerns, mitigation, et cetera, about traffic along Bryant, and what-if mitigation, if any, you'll be able to provide.
So as relates to the interaction between the existing neighborhood and this, what we are planning is a 20-foot buffer that we will provide plannings on 25-foot centers. On the other side of that would be the, you know, the fence for the, for these homes. So the neighbors would get the benefit of that buffer, then you would have the fence here. You have all the existing trees, so we want to pull that fence to the disturbed area, meaning the, the parking lot. So the intent was, the specific request at the meeting was, provide us a buffer between your development and, and us. And so they went back and were able to design it in a manner where we had 20 feet that we could give as a landscape buffer.
But again, the fence is on the other side of those trees.
Yeah.
So the trees will be where the neighbors are?
Sure.
Okay.
So, and real quick, I think confusion on sidewalks. We are doing sidewalks.
Okay.
One of the issues at the meeting was, some of the neighbors didn't want us to do sidewalks because they thought it created a more dangerous situation. We absolutely want to do sidewalks. We think it's important to do sidewalks. We're building sidewalks. The question on plating, so plating isn't required for commercial development. We will, of course, plat the, the residential piece. A specific plan is required for the commercial piece. It's not for the residential, because residential developments don't ever have specific plans. We'll have to go through a significant drainage analysis here and the city of Edmond. So it will be thoroughly reviewed from both cities. We have, obviously onsite detention is shown on our, our site plan. The, there was a request or an, an ask about building sidewalks on the west side of Bryant. We don't own that property. We don't have rights to that property. We can't build sidewalks on the west side of Bryant. All we can do are build sidewalks where, where we own and where we're developing, which, which we intend to do. We have offered to pay for a stoplight if it warrants from the city of Oklahoma City. At the neighborhood meeting, there was some discussion from some that they liked that idea. Others didn't like the idea because they didn't want to be stopped along Bryant. My client has, has offered to pay if it can warrant by the Public Works and Traffic Commission. So we think with adequate, you know, traffic controls, sidewalks, all of the things are there to make this a really great walkable development. And where it's located, I think is particularly well-placed for the city and the ability to, you know, generate sales tax in an area that is, you know, kind of on the outer edge of the city, which is always a positive thing from a fiscal standpoint. So all things being considered, we think this will have a wonderful impact on this area, recognizing that it's, it's no longer going to be a horse farm. It was for sale. Somebody could have bought it and operated their own horse farm, but accepting the fact that the horse farm is gone, we think this is a wonderful addition and, and one that the neighbors will enjoy having other options for dining and shopping and all those things.
Thank you. Other, I think I also want to get at Mr. Silk's question regarding the, the level of specificity, whether we'll be following exactly the plans as presented. And so with you answering the question regarding specific plan, just so that everyone knows, and I, we don't send public notice for a specific plan. So that is important, that you make sure that you're following these agendas, you know, in the future, should this be approved, that you be looking out for the opportunity to review that. But specific plan would mean they'd have to come to us with more, more information regarding the actual layout of the site, what the facade, the elevations, what the facades will look like, all of that, so that we will fully get to see that and approve that before any of the building goes forward. The residential parts, which I know a number of our neighbors here live next to the residential part of this development, that will require plating. The plating will be publicly noticed, so you will have an opportunity to come back to us and make any additional comments, et cetera, about how the, the residential part of this site is laid out. So I do want to give those assurances as far as that question. I don't think, for Mr. Silk's benefit, I don't think I, I'm going to ask Barry to come back and give the description that he did give previously regarding the city's obligations and review that occurs regarding detention, retention, and flooding, but he's here, and he's really smart, and I would encourage you to visit with him about those issues and the city's obligations as far as that's concerned. Change is hard, and I think that, I wish it was still a horse farm, but I do understand and appreciate that this is a pretty exceptional development that I think will be a great benefit and asset to the neighbors.
Can I make one statement?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir, you did not sign up to speak, though.
May I make one statement, please?
Yes, sir. Please come to the, you have to come to the microphone, sir. You have one minute, sir.
I need 30 seconds. My name is John Iwansky. I live at 14101 Middle Berry Road, which is right in the middle of that. He mentioned that he thinks the neighbors would love this development. I can tell you that the bottom half do not.
Okay.
That's my comment.
Thank you. And I'll, I'll make it clear. Neighbors at the, at the bottom half of this development are not in favor of this development, and I understand. And I understand, after hearing the concerns, I now understand some of their perspectives about that. I don't agree with that perspective, but I understand, I hear it, and I respect it. Other questions, comments from commissioners?
I, oh, go, Janice.
I just want to ask if the developer is willing to take on some responsibility for, I won't say noticing, because that has a legal definition, but keeping the neighbors aware of when the specific plan comes back for hearing. I think it is a huge, huge problem that people who are very invested in the specifics of this will not get any kind of notice from the city about when that's going to be done. And, you know, it might be quite a long time from now, so.
So Mark and his office are really good at keeping track of things such as this, and so he, he had committed that if he's involved, he is more than happy to, to do that with the contacts that he has.
But to be clear, we do not have the power to bind them to that, so, but we would appreciate your word.
Yeah, I would say our office would commit as long as we are involved, but understand that oftentimes a firm may be involved in the zoning, and a completely different firm may be doing the engineering and the site work. So if Johnson and Associates is involved, move it either with the plating or the commercial civil design, then yes, we have the contact information, and we can alert the neighbors and meet if necessary.
So, and, and I'd like a little more than that from you.
Sure. You know, my staff is back at the office watching, and I'm sure making notes that we will do our best. If, if, again, if we're involved, we, we can email the contact that we had to set the meeting.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
I just had a question on the site screening, and I know you're going to come back with a specific plan, but the material you're going to use for the fence and the height?
Mm-hmm. So it, so what we have in there is standard language. So, six to eight foot tall, and it's a combination of all the materials. If it's wood, it has to have the brick columns on, you know, spaced so far apart.
Okay. And just from my point of view, I'd suggest a mason or stucco fence between the property and the residence.
Well, so, well, we, you know, the, the language is in there to allow wood with, you know, brick columns. It's going to be a pretty good distance away, at least in the commercial piece, and they're going to have the benefit of the, the screening of the tree. So it's not as important here as it may be in, in other, other sites. But do, I mean, a masonry wall, just, it's cost prohibitive to, to do it. I mean, I, I know we had that big debate, but that was an industrial use. This is not that type. You know, if you think of like Classen Curve, Classen Curve next to the residential that Janice spent a lot of time with, they, they didn't even want site proof, so they have brick columns, but it's wrought iron. They wanted to be able to see and engage with that. So this is, we think of, of a type that's going to be more of a inviting than building a solid wall really creates this division of, of, you know, spaces.
Just the sense that I got from the actual homeowners who spoke seemed maybe they didn't quite work.
Well, I know. But I, you know, I hear that every Thursday, and oftentimes they're the first ones there at the ribbon cutting, so.
I mean, you know, just to be clear, the fence around Classen Curve is a green fence.
I mean, the interior.
Yeah. So.
Other questions?
I think I just wanted to note, I mean, it's, the compatible uses, I mean, oftentimes you, you can make the same point on both sides. It's like, some people don't want commercial because it's all residential, but I personally believe that you want a mix of, of uses, and that that commercial actually benefits this sea of residential in reducing your drives to other commercial areas of Edmund or Oklahoma City. So having more opportunities closer to home is, in my mind, is, is interested in planning a, a positive.
Go ahead. Question about the, the trees with the buffer zone and the fence. Are you guys doing irrigation for the trees to keep those alive?
I believe the ordinance requires.
Okay.
I defer to Commissioner Landscape Extraordinaire.
Let me rephrase that question. Are you doing an automatic irrigation?
I don't believe that it required, ordinance requires an automatic irrigation system, but I'm not.
Well, I, I know it doesn't. My question is if, if they are going to provide that, because...
So in the landscape ordinance, it requires irrigation, but it does not require automatic irrigation. So there are other forms of irrigation that can be done. It has to be within a certain distance of a hose bib, gator bags, there are other ways. I think at this point, we're really early to know exactly what the irrigation and planting plan is going to be.
Okay. Let's hear that question. Thanks.
And I know we've got a hand raised, sir, but we gave everyone an opportunity to speak. We did give you an opportunity to speak, and I think if you have any specific questions, we, you can pose them to the applicant when this, when we're finished considering this. This will also go forward to the city council. We are not, we are a recommending body with regard to this application, so final action will be taken by the city council. You will have an opportunity to be heard on that final action. Go ahead, to close us out.
Well, I'm done. Do you want me to give you the rundown of the TEs again?
Please.
Okay. So as drafted, TE 1, 2, and 5, we agreed to. On TE 3, we would request that the wall is defined in the PUD be on the outside of the disturbed area. On TE 4, the Oklahoma City piece shall be 15% open space. On TE 6, three access points, however, they must meet the minimum separation requirement to of 200 feet. And then finally, on TE 7, that is intended to apply to the outdoor patios.
Any questions from commissioners with regard to those TEs? I'm in support.
There's no further discussion, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of item PUD 1946 to city council, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record.
Commissioner Claire moves to recommend approval of PUD 1946 to city council, subject to the amended technical evaluations as read into the record. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes when available. And in light of this late hour, but we have been sitting a while, I think, why don't we take a five-minute break, and we'll come back at 4:50 to finish this agenda, items 27 and 28.
Okay, let's, let's call this meeting back to order. Appreciate your patience. I know we took a little bit longer of a break. We'll do our best to operate as efficiently and respectfully as possible. Let's begin with item 27.
Item twenty, no. Item 27 is a consideration of a proposed map amendment to the conference of plan, changing the land use typology area base designation from rural, low intensity to rural medium intensity on a 44 acre tract located east of north Midwest Boulevard and south of East Memorial Road.
CPA 2023 0003 is an amendment to the comprehensive plan, changing the line use typology area base designation from rural low intensity to rural medium intensity on approximately 43.87 acres tract located east of north Midwest Boulevard and south of East Memorial Road. I want to mention that what is in pink is the original application. We added the area that is in blue, just if in case that is approved, the whole area will change and not, we wouldn't have that little area. There is an associate application that is PUD 1950. There you have an idea where the subject site is located at. I want to mention too, I want you guys to look at this map real quick. So you notice that everything around it is rural low, even though it has some rural medium to the south, it has the turnpike that it divides the, the site from the south. Next one, like I mentioned, it's rural low, it's surrounded by rural low. It has some rural medium to the south, to the south of it, but like I mentioned, the turnpike is like a divider between them, between both ludas. The line use, almost all of it is undeveloped, some residential, but even the residential is very rural in character too. The zoning is AA agricultural with some RA to the south, but again, we have the, the turnpike there dividing. It has some commercial to the northwest too. In terms of the water, the site falls on the city water service zone characterized as potential for connectivity, but at the moment, the site does not have any access to Oklahoma City water. The closest water main is located 1.9 miles to the west. It's important to mention this because rural medium, one of the correctors, character, characters of rural medium is in, you know, we are assuming that in the future, it might be close to some water and it can get water from the city. In terms of wastewater sewer, it's completely outside of served sewer shed. It's not even close to, you know, any sewer. Terms of fire, the site is outside of the rural respond time target for emergency services. So it's not even close to urban right now. It's even not in rural service side. The site too, has some environmental sensitive considerations to it. Almost the whole site is what we consider upland forest habitat, especially in this area is the cross timber type can be part, this is very important because it has very unique characteristics. It's, it's good for air quality, stormwater management, heat, island mitigation. This forested area provides value ecosystem. It serves as a habitat, soil retention and water quality for later cation. The conditions and provisions for higher level of services have not changed for the subject site. The prevailing development pattern in the area is rural in character. No expectation for extension of urban infrastructure, water sewer, or future fire stations to, to improve the response, response time for this area. This site includes some environmental sensitive areas due to the predominance of trees designated as upland forest. This site is not proximate to either urban low or in the future designated areas. The staff recommends denial to this request. If you have any questions.
Are there topographic or geological issues that, that would prohibit the extension of water and sewer to the site? Or is it just that it's not projected?
In terms of sewer and water, it's just very far. The, the closest that we measured for water was more, almost two miles. Sewer is just not even close to, to the area. I mean, eventually in many, many years, but I don't think we will have any sewer.
Thank you.
Anytime soon.
Any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Perfect. David Box 522, call cord drive. So the, I believe that the analysis that the turnpike is the line of demarcation is, is a bit flawed. Now I'll grant you that north of the turnpike is rural low, but the problem is that fails to account for what's actually on the ground in the reality. So RA is one acre lots and what's developed north of Memorial in that subdivision right here, these are one acre lots. So yeah, the comp plan says rural low, but the comp plan says rural low for all of this, which ignores the reality of all of the one acre subdivisions and zoning that have been approved. So south is rural medium. That's what we're seeking here. Rural medium again is littered with RA, one acre developments. You may recall this application came through several months ago and we had two separate pieces to it. We had commercial, straight C3 on the frontage and then straight RA behind it and no comp plan. There was a lot of discussion that day about why we did or didn't have a comp plan application. So we went back, we filed a comp plan application and now we filed a PUD. We removed the commercial. That was one of the things that the neighbors were upset about in addition to the neighborhood, but the, the fact that there was commercial. So we've taken the commercial out. And so what we're asking for is rural medium, which would be consistent with not only what's south of the turnpike, but the, the reality of what exists on the ground and has been approved north of the turnpike with all of these, everything you see in yellow is RA. Now those are straight RA. So our put actually has an opportunity to, to be, you know, more specific, but everything you see in yellow is what we're asking to do. So we would ask you approve the rural medium and allow us to move forward with RA, consistent with what you see on this map. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from commissioners? I'll kick us off by saying, I know that there has been a number of discussions that we've had and we're gonna, and I appreciate staff's effort to help us continue to organize study sessions regarding the impact of urban sprawl, regarding the impact of aerobic septic systems. And because all of that is, is really critical to our analysis about changes to the comp plan like this. I think it's hard for me to see a meaningful difference between this plot of land and what is directly south and what is directly across the street. Now that we are voting on the comp plan and I'm aware because of my numerous conversations with our neighbors, that there are a number of infrastructure issues that would need to be addressed if this area were to be developed. And I have respect and appreciation for that, but that is not necessarily the entire question that we're answering with regard to the comp plan change. That's a question that at least for me, I think is partially this and partially the zoning. So it's a tough question for me, but I, I'm finding a hard time seeing the difference between what's already exists, the area across the street and this. Thoughts?
I mean, we keep coming back to this over and over and over.
We do.
We have not yet decided that we're going to plant our flag, I don't think. The issue with respect to sprawl is a huge issue. The plan deals with it in, you know, a multitude of ways. One of them is, you know, response times. One of them is the layering of the ludas with respect to infrastructure availability and so on and so forth. If we chose to adhere to the plan strictly in this area, then we would have to just look at these other areas and go, those were mistakes and we shouldn't have approved them, but we did. And so now we're going to have to just kind of draw a line through that and go from here. You're absolutely right. When you look at this on paper, there's not a huge difference between this and all of those other lots that are already labeled RA. But I think, you know, I, I have not seen yet, at least, the will amongst the planning commissioners, you know, to draw that line and, and, you know, to say, you know, really, we, we've kind of followed a path that has encouraged development in places that maybe we shouldn't have, and we're going to stop doing that and we're going to do something else. It's awfully easy to follow the same path that we've been following.
True.
And, you know, I'm, I'm no saint or martyr. I'm not, you know, especially in tune with, you know, the cosmos or anything like that to say, this is where we need to plant the flag. It is a difficult question. It really is. And to me, there's, there's kind of another layer to it too. I mean, you know, when other areas of the city are burgeoning and developing, I look at this area and I say, you know, why should it be held to a different standard? There are some reasons that it should be, for instance, the cross timbers. We don't have that other places, you know, but it seems to me that it is a sector of the city that has been underdeveloped over the years and that there has to be some kind of way to balance that against these other factors and other considerations.
Hard call on that. Other thoughts?
Well, I think when we've looked at this before, you know, in, in similar situations, I mean, I can recall one that was 550 lots. And I think when you're, you know, potentially supporting that kind of growth over one development, you know, over a short amount of time, that that, that causes significant issues for infrastructure. On something like this, my opinion only is that, you know, 20 or 30 lots, and if someone wants to go out here and spend 750,000 for an acre and they're okay being on septic and they're be okay being on well water, that's on them. And, and they're okay driving over bumpy roads to get there, they're making that decision. Again, I think this is, this is different than 550 acres or 550 lots.
You talking about another Ward seven case that I spent in immeasurable amounts of time on?
Actually, no, I was talking about Ward one.
Oh, okay. Great. Any thoughts? Otherwise, we, I think it's time for us to have a motion.
I just want to say, and I, I agree with Commissioner Claire on, on that. The, the other part is this is, this is a comp plan. This doesn't really have anything to do with the zoning yet. And to me, I think that the change in the comp plan is warranted.
Other thoughts? Sounds like we're ready for a motion.
I feel just the opposite about that. The zoning strategy is harder for me. You know, the, the idea that this piece of property is still very pristine, that it does have, it's almost entirely covered by upland forest, that it does have, you know, some serious environmental conditions that, you know, really are going to require protection if they're going to be saved. That is harder for me than the zoning would be, but I hear what you're saying.
But then couldn't we do some protection in considering the zoning?
We'll see.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I'm ready to make a motion. Move to recommend approval of CPA 2023 00002.
And the motion from Commissioner Claire is to approve of the comp plan amendment CPA 2023 00002. I might've added an extra zero. I apologize. Seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item 28.
Item 28 is related.
Excuse me. I know a number of people were signed up to speak, so I apologize. I messed up. We need to rescind that because people were signed up for both 27 and 28. So yeah, that's, that's on me. I apologize. Let's, let's have a motion to reconsider because we did not.
I move to reconsider the item.
Commissioner Claire moves to reconsider the comp plan amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Let's have a voice vote. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote?
Yay.
Commissioner Powers?
Yay.
Commissioner Privet?
Yea.
Commissioner Newman?
Yea.
Commissioner Noble?
Aye.
Commissioner La Forge?
Yea.
I also vote yea and I apologize because of this late hour. So I sincerely apologize for that. Let's begin with Mr. Mitchner.
And then I'm making it worse.
It's like a steamroll, steamrolled. Now, the map there is great, but all those developments that they're showing, you changed the RA, those were, it's not done. They hadn't destroyed the environment yet. So we don't know the consequences of changing all those from five acre to one, two, or even three acre lots. The, well, I live across the street at 8225 East Memorial, which is right across from the one you just, I don't know what the word you approved, which I don't want to say because I don't think it should be, but the lower one, the other side of I-35 or, excuse me, Turner Turnpike, you know, they just started development. So there's not, the majority is five acre lots. That's the truth to the matter, the surrounding area. The number of people live there, the number of acres, it's not, it's five acre. It might even be 10 acre per person out there. So I appreciate, banner is how you spell it? She just echoed the, the plan that's been 20, 23 years old that says the same thing. She just went through this, the same motions, what it'll do to the environment, what the, the aspects of building that many houses with the sewer and the septic and the wells and all that stuff. There's no parks, there's no police, there's no fire department. There's just, it's just a nice rural area that needs protection, excuse me.
That's okay.
That needs protection. And I feel that, you know, is, we're not, it's, this isn't about NIMBY, not in my backyard. It's about trying to protect an environment. There's plenty of places to build. They're not building there because they want to, I'm sorry, it's not for, people work for money. They don't, they're not building these for the goodwill of their heart. Okay. But that sediment will destroy that area and it'll make it, it'll be, I mean, I've lived here my whole life. I don't know about you people, but Oklahoma City, I love, but you know, the city wasn't that great on planning, you know, Tulsa was the place that planned their city well. And I think that's an area that hasn't been planned. And when you start doing this, it'll be run. It'll be, the reasons that people moved there will be gone. Now, if that doesn't matter, then I guess then, then do whatever. But that's why we moved out there because we looked at that thing that said, hey, five acres, rural, that's what we have. And these are the reasons. And now they seem to not matter. So I appreciate you, Mrs. Powers, for your sentiment and you for reiterating the facts. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure what that did to us though, because there's another speakers.
Oh, yes. No, we're not finished. We're not finished.
Maybe it was already decided.
I had this list. Well, it's, I have this list.
I don't know. I don't want to be mean, but it seemed like we got rolled over. So.
You're right and I apologize. I'm the one who was in the wrong because the list had 27 and 28 and I was thinking about 28 for comments. And so I apologize. That's on me and this list.
And I'm not, I didn't want to speak quite yet, but I wanted to pass this out if I could.
Sure, you can.
Because I think it helps what he's going to say and what Kurt's going to say. Give it to you.
And you still have to speak in the microphone and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, it's Jennifer Lakatis, but that, those papers show you from a standpoint, not just what's RA, it shows you how big these acreages are all around there. So I'll, I'll wait for my turn, but I just wanted to have you see those.
You want to just go ahead and take your turn?
Well, I can.
If you're signed up?
Sure. So I'm representing my client who owns 30 acres right across the street from the planned area. And, you know, I think what all of us are considering is the comp plan years ago, it just, this just doesn't fit. It's just so inconsistent with what's all over the area. And even though, you know, there, they had, there's one neighborhood behind all of these lots on the other side that are one acre, but that's, that was in the, way before that comp plan was introduced. So it was a long, long time ago. So as you can see, you go out like a mile to almost two miles. There's very few subdivisions that are, that are smaller than two acres. Everything is, a lot of it's five acres plus, but you don't find one acre in less than one acre out there for quite a while. So that's my point. We just want consistency and follow the plan that's, that was, was in place because if we don't have a plan, what do we have, you know? And so hopefully that will help you. You can see all those acreages on there.
And thank you. Russ Smith.
Hi, Ross. Ross Smith. I live in Edmund Lake Estates, 13829. So we are the community northeast of the property in question. There's about 16 lots in there. All of us neighbors have about anywhere from five to 10 acres. I live on about 11. So I had lots of stuff I want to talk about, but I understand a lot of that's going to be drainage issues, street issues, et cetera. So just to touch on what we're talking about right now. street issues, et cetera. So just to touch on what we're talking about right now, Ms. Powers, you talked about the topography. This piece of property is, it sits on a hill. It's a hilltop. So we're going to have a lot of, everything is going to go downhill from this property. Anything this build's going to be going downhill. My property sits about 80 feet below this. Kirk's is about 100 feet below this. So that's one issue. You all asked about what's the big difference between this one, all the other RA's. This is Memorial frontage. That's a big difference. These other properties are not on Memorial with the traffic. Last thing I'm going to talk about is urban sprawl, which you guys mentioned. We have one of the biggest metros in the United States. There's plenty of other places to build smaller lots. Thanks.
Thank you. Karen Mitchner. Okay. Kirk Whitman.
Don't start the clock yet.
We won't. Not till you start.
Short guy.
Kirk, are we missing something?
I think I'll wait in line with you.
Oh, we can give it back to you, so you can start. Let's give, let's give Mr. Whitman a copy of each, please. Let's go ahead and give him a copy of each. Thank you. It's all good.
I'm sorry, guys. Hang on one.
I only have, I only have one and three.
Okay. We're ready, I guess. My name is Kirk Whitman. I live at 13901 North Midwest Boulevard. We had a meeting with the applicants or developers yesterday, and a couple of councilmen showed up, and that was appreciated. We had a good visit, and I think we made some headway. We're back again. This is Exhibit 1, and it shows my 40 acres that I zoned in the 80s. And as you can see, there's a house and a barn and horse crowds. And it's one of the, it's the one right across the street. I'm not going to develop it. I mean, if I need to put a restriction of a couple acres and more, that's, I'll be happy to do that. Just make sure nobody else does it. You'll see on that track, Track 1, Section 10, to the west, and Track 2, Section 10. That was the development of Shoreline that was approved just recently. And I have no idea why. It was in the environmental engineering reports. It was in the no development phase, and it appears that nobody really knew the city plan from 2009, the 90s, and 2015. Or it wouldn't have been approved, because it's sitting right on the water, and it's 150 feet straight downhill, 200 feet, you're in the lake. And one acre, one acre was approved there. I'll admit it. I think it was a terrible mistake, but I was going to protest. I sent a letter of protest. The staff said we're going to deny it, or recommend denial. So I didn't show up, and it was approved. I'm not sure I'd have made any difference, but that's one of the, that's one of the problems when you don't show up, and not everybody's aware of the master plan. It's, the area is designated as Environmental Conservancy Conservation Area, and the city and the staff, the city plan of 1990, of 2009, where it was amended, and then the master plan of 2015. That is the reason, it's quite small, the area that they made the restrictions on for this, five acres around the lake. And it's due to the pollution, it's due to preservation of life, water supply. And I think, I think the city plan and the staff have done a great job in coming up with that plan. Exhibit 2 is a plat showing the lake, and it also is a map showing the National Wetland Inventory around the lake. And you'll see the little yellow square, that's my 40 acres, and you'll see the wetlands all on that. The reason this land right here is so important to keep in its current state, is everything flows off that knob, and it goes straight down the hill to the west, goes into the lake area. The water supply is two feet below the surface in that wetland area. You go out there with a shovel, you'll get water. Same thing to the south and west, and same thing to the north. I mean, the north and west, and same to the north. I think it's very important that we keep this thing on five acres. I really do. We're something more than two acres. Sewage runoff that goes straight down the hill. I've already talked about the anaerobic systems, and the, how poorly they work. I've given you all the engineering studies. There's 10 engineering studies I could give you. They don't work. They don't work. They do it first, but then you got to keep up. When you got to keep up with the pressures, you got to keep with the chlorination, you got to keep up with the salt. Every one of these houses has salt systems, because it's hard water. When they do a brine wash, it goes into the septic system, and it neutralizes some of the work of the microbes. So another reason why this should stay the way it is. I know I have a very limited time. I was told that the DEQ approved septic lawn land, I think that was Mr. Box said, 30,000 square feet. That's .7 acres. I dare you to find anybody that would approve that kind of, around an environmental sensitive area. I mean, a lake, a pond, the Sierra Club would go crazy, the National Forest Association would go crazy. And I don't think every geologic formation, topography, and stratigraphic area out here, you can just say .7 is good. I mean, two feet below the surface, you've got bedrock. You know what the sewage does? Hits the bedrock, it goes down the hill, and it outcrops onto other people's lands, okay? Everything's not the same. You can't just say, DEQ says 30,000 feet's great for aerobic systems, anaerobic systems, either one. I think this area is really unique. It's really unique in numerous ways. The last thing I'm going to bring up is Exhibit 3, and this was their exhibit. Yes, there is, just north, there's a one acre. There's my one acre. Really, it's platted 1.7 or 1.8, and my house is on six and a half, seven acres, and I'm not developing it. Some of these were put in before the lake, north country, before the lake. It's over, it's 2.8 acres. Quail Ridge, it's just to the southwest of them. That's over two acres, put in in the 70s. So the ones in the north, South Lake was put in in like 80s, 90s. Everything that was approved was approved before, Terry Massey told me that the city has taken a stand. They took a stand in the 90s and said, we're going to make this low development area, period. And since that time, for 30 years, there wasn't a single housing addition approved. And you can look at this map. Everyone just knew, no offense, Mr. Box got done in the last couple of years, and you all are the ones that let it go through. And I think it was a poor idea. That's just my opinion, and nothing against Mr. Box. He does a great job. I had a great meeting with him yesterday. But I think you got to stick with what you got. I mean, it's, the plan is there, the plan's in place. Some of these two acre developments were put in before the lake was even there. So to put them on there and say there's anything consistent, the only thing consistent, there was no one acre lots approved for 30 years in this area. Not one. Not one. So to say it's consistent, and it's consistent with everything else, I'm not doing anything with mine. If I need to restrict mine, I'll be happy to. I can't do anything about Shoreline now. It's approved. I can do a little bit about the one south of the turnpike, but not much, because it's been approved. But this one should not be approved. And I want to thank you for listening to me, listen to the city planners. Medium is two acres plus, and that's what the minimum should be. And this is low intensity, which is five acres plus. For folks working on the turnpike, I've talked to them, they're going to be buying some of this land, and they've told me they're going to take between 50 and 100 feet, and it's going to be done this year. The Turner Turnpike stands on its own. It's not part of the big five million, billion dollar bond thing. It stands on its own. So some of this land's going to be taken for turnpike on both sides, eventually. And my guess is probably by the end of the year. But that's just my understanding from what they told me. I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
And make a good decision here.
Thank you, Kirk. Next, we have Chris Mitchner. I had two Mitchners in here, so I, you know. Oh, sir, you have to come to the microphone. Mr. Mitchner, you have to come to the microphone and give us your name.
My brother Steve, older brother. Yeah, not any smarter, though. Okay. Well, when, you know, my name's Steve Mitchner. I live at 8501 Northeast 129. He's South Mitchner. Yeah. So anyway, but you, you know, you look at this, just like what Kirk said, you think, whoa, yeah, existing zoning. There's just all kinds of one acre stuff there. Well, there's not. There's merely been approval. And the one in the lower left there that is shown to be one acre is Blue Quail Ridge. And yesterday, we had the former president of the HOA there, who said all lots in there are two acres or larger. So we can, you know, take that off the board. And then, as Kirk said, you know, he was, would have protested had he been aware of Shoreline, the property next to him. And then his land, as he stated again, he would sign whatever it takes to show that he would not develop that land. And his land was zoned that in the 80s. And, you know, so basically, you know, you wipe all that away. You know, there's nothing up there that's one acre, that's been built on, except for- Little Oaks. Little Oaks. Little Oaks. And like Kirk said, all that came in before the lake. Yeah. So I mean, you know, if you all want to have consistency, well, then, you know, you need five acres. Because in that square mile, which I'll be up here in another month, when they come and do what's on my side of the turnpike, you know, there's not one, I'm not aware of one single house that's built in that square mile that's on anything less than five acres. All the people to the west have, or east have, well, actually, east and west most have, you know, 10, 15, 20, 30 acres. There's only like three owners on each side of that. And then there's us, in our neighborhood, Rock Springs. You know, we have 35 people on five, most of them are five corners. There's a few seven acre lots. But anyway, I mean, you know, if you look at that map, we're comparing apples to apples. We're not. Also, my concern is where I live, you can't really tell, but there's a drainage flume that goes underneath Memorial. And so not sure how much water comes from there, but it does, it can get pretty hefty water that goes through it, goes through my property on the way to Arcadia. It's the only flume along that whole plot, or parcel, or whatever you want to call it. So I don't know where it's going to go when they start building. But it, there's a drain right there in my front yard. Goes all the way across to that acreage. So God forbid the whole 40 acres goes through my area. You know, I don't know. I know they don't do that stuff till later, as far as, you know, the water impact and all that stuff, but it is a concern for mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, I believe we have Eunice, and I apologize that I'm going to, that I'm, if I get your name wrong.
Well, thank you for letting me speak on behalf of our neighborhood.
Could you give your name and address for the record? And I apologize that I did not pronounce it correctly.
Eunice Ramonza, 8421 East Memorial. I live directly across the street from this application. And I live on eight acres. And my nephew lives on five acres next to me, and then we have 10, another five, and another five, and another 12. So I mean, it's all acreage. And I'm not really sure what we're out here arguing with this. You guys denied this last time. Only thing is to change, taking the commercial out and add more homes on. And just, I wish you guys would stick with that RA with five acres and, you know, with putting that many homes in this addition with septic tank and drilling well waters. Two years ago, we had to drill more well on our property because it went dry. 14 years ago, we'd drill 190 foot, but now it's good, it's not good enough because it's dry. And adding 40 homes plus, it's going to, everybody's going to dry. I mean, I'm not sure, you know, it's really concerning, because I mean, with the water, and of course, with the septic tank, and running off to the, going east, and just, when it rains, it's really bad. And then, and put more lots, it just is killing our country living. Like, everybody wants to be living on five acres, not, not just be stacked up. And with the plan they showed us last night, they're, they're having one entrance, one or one exit on Memorial, one on Midwest Boulevard. Of course, this is a subject to change. It's just right directly from my gate getting in the house. And I have two young ones going to be driving cars a couple of years from now. And, you know, the traffic, of course, you guys said you're not concerned with the traffic, because it's really bad on Memorial. And you're going to put 40 more homes? Like I mentioned last, last night in the meeting, you know, you have waste management on Tuesdays, and you have the recycle and trash. Then, then you have the bulk trash once a month. Then you have the post guy in and out every day, or six days a week. I mean, it's just a lot of traffic. And when the Edmund School bus comes in, picks the kids up, he's having to park in an angle where people won't drive and hit the kids. I mean, it just, of course, you know, the traffic is not the big issue with you guys, but I mean, drilling wells and, and water runoff, we'd just like to keep it in low density. And staff already had denied it. I mean, I'm not sure what, we're still arguing. If, I'm staff denying it, so I mean, it's just low density. Let's stick with five acres and everybody be happy. And I mentioned that to them last night in the meeting. If they put five acres all by the, the 10 acres cross street from me to make sure no one else is going to put homes in there. I'd be the first buyer. But I'm telling you, if this deal goes through, we're going to do the same, I am going to do the same thing what people did in, in other locations. I'm going to put a banner up, no more one acre lots. And every time someone try and pull in, buy a lot from this gentleman, they're not going to be able to buy one. Because they're going to see the issues that are happening. Because this needs to stop at some point. Thank you for giving me time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And I believe that everyone who signed up to speak for the comp plan amendment is, I believe, has also signed up for the, the underlying zoning. I will say this in acknowledging some of the statements from the neighbors, I do think it is very reasonable to look at the comp plan and to plan your own family decisions and home purchases. and home purchases based on the assurances that the plan makes. But there is an amendment process for a reason, and I know that's what opposition would say in response to that, but I do appreciate that. And I, I think that is something else that we need to take into account is that people have reasonable expectations based on the plan that we made. And so I do think that matters. Other thoughts or questions from commissioners before we consider a motion?
I'll ask, it's going to end up with a question for the applicant. But first, I want to say, on one hand, I, I mean, I try to be sympathetic, but it's a pretty nice deal, one acre is still big lots. It's not some other alternatives that could happen there. It's not a big pot farm. It's not a, I think of the compost, the manure composting thing that somebody wanted an admin, well, this looks like a good spot for it. I mean, there's things that can happen here, and I'm surprised, it surprises me when people come in and complain about one acre lots, but I get it. You, you want, you don't want one acre lots. I'll go ahead and ask, though, of the applicant, two acres is, what about two acres? Why not one, five? To me, they're all really nice. We're all in the United States, living great lives, and it's wonderful, one acre, five acres, whatever, but.
Yeah.
I'll argue for it. Why not, why not bigger lots? Why not at least two acre lots?
So, I mean, of course, that's the, the PUD discussion. So what I've, what I've handed out, what, what we'll talk about in the next item, is thirty lots on forty acres. So that's actually less than what straight RA would allow. Straight RA would allow approximately forty lots. What we're willing to do is limit it to the thirty lots as depicted here, which is a density of approximately one point four dwelling units per acre. Additionally, because of the concerns with trees in the PUD, we're willing to stipulate that the northern thirty feet of all of those lots would be required to retain all of those trees. So we think that in the PUD discussion, there are some things we can do within that framework that, that makes it more manageable, that, you know, they, they don't have those protections everywhere else you see the, the yellow, because that's just straight RA. You can clear cut anything you want, and you can do lots at an acre or slightly less than an acre.
Okay. And let me add, the comment about the expansion of the turnpike, I think that's real. So if that happens, then your one point four acres has gone even smaller. So the arrow on the side of eliminating some of these lots, you end up at two acre lots. Then if there's some turnpike expansion, I mean, it doesn't really matter to me. It's one point four, it's two, it's, they're all in the same realm. But for the neighbor's concern, why not just a few less lots and make it two acres? I know you can make a little bit more money on a little bit smaller, but sure would be, sure would be awful compromising of, of the applicant to be at two acre lots, it seems.
We may want to reserve some of this discussion for the zoning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We are on the comp plan amendment right now.
I'm sorry. Let's say for the comp plan amendment, to the extent someone was going to later come with an application like this next one, and it would, it would make more sense if they were indicating that they were interested in two acre instead of one point four acre.
So the turnpike discussion, I mean, in another life, I spend my time representing landowners against, you know, the evil empire that is.
Yes, you do.
The OTA and ODOT and even the city on occasion. And until an offer is presented, it's all hypothetical, right? If the turnpike is serious, they can present offers, they can seek to acquire it. My client hasn't received any offer from the turnpike.
Right. But I drive it at least once a week all the way to Tulsa, and it's expanding out east. It seems like it's coming this way. So if we believe that this might be expanded affecting this, then maybe the comp plan here shouldn't be changing to where allowed even smaller lots there that will then end up being even smaller if the turnpike expands.
So, so, I mean, what would potentially happen is he loses lots, right? So we're going to limit it to thirty lots, which is less dense than what RA would allow. And if the turnpike comes in, what it might mean is he ends up with less lots than thirty. We're willing to say a max of thirty. And if the turnpike takes a swath that makes part of it, you know, problematic, well, maybe we end up with less than thirty lots in the after. But I, I mean, I, I don't think it's, it's fair to speculate what the turnpike might do until they do it.
Hmm.
I mean, they're.
I'm not going to close my eyes to what's a very likely.
Well, again, they haven't offered. They have condemnation authority, but until they get real.
Other questions, comments? Otherwise, we're ready for a motion, commissioners.
Excuse me, can I be, no, please?
No, I'm sorry. But you, we're going to talk about the zoning, so you're going to have an opportunity to be heard on this issue.
But this is a client, neighbor has an offer in hand in the east, and they're going to lose their house, that's why they're not here.
I, and I appreciate that, but again, we're, we're, you'll have an opportunity to address that in the underlying zoning. We need a motion, commissioners.
I wanted to, I wanted to, I was listening for some, you know, aha moment through all of that conversation, and I, I didn't have anything that changed, changed my stance. So I still will make a motion to recommend approval of the comp plan amendment.
Commissioner Clare has moved to recommend approval of the comp plan amendment, CPA twenty twenty-three zero 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 two. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Noble. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes. We're now in line for item twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight is PUD nineteen fifty, application to rezone thirteen five hundred north Midwest Boulevard from AA to PUD nineteen fifty.
Good afternoon, David Box, five twenty-two Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. So now that, now that we're to the PUD, again, what I think is unique about the PUD is unlike everything you see in yellow that allows lot sizes under an acre in certain circumstances, what we can commit to is thirty lots on the forty acres. We can commit to, you know, the minimum of the one acre. We can commit to tree preservation along that north, which I think is where the majority of the concern rests, which I don't think they have that benefit here. And so that brings the density to a one point four dwelling units per acre, which I think is, is in line with the other developments that have been approved. So this is one point five, they keep saying two, this is one point five. The sheet they handed out here, these are all one acre. It's forty-four lots at one acre exactly. Thirty lots on the forty acres with the thirty-foot tree preservation in the PUD, and we can make it a condition on the plat to be a plat note as well, we think gets them a compatible development, considering, again, all these folks live up against one acre lots, forty-four one acre lots. So there are TEs in the event that the comp plan was approved, and, oh, we got the wrong one. Framed in alternatives, so if approved, there are four TEs. And we cannot agree to TE one, but TE two, three, and four would be fine. So again, our proposal would then be add a TE five to make it a maximum of thirty lots at a TE six to require the, the northern thirty feet of any lot to be held in tree preservation.
So, so it effectively would mean, if we were to agree to those technical evaluations, it would mean that along Memorial Road, we'll have, you said thirty feet?
Thirty feet.
Of trees.
Except for where the, the access point is.
Except for the interest, yeah.
Yeah. Where there's a lot, it'll be thirty foot of trees. And, I mean, as the commission knows, like, right now it's zone AA, but the owner could go and just take every tree out, right? So they actually get a bigger bargain than they have now because there's no requirement that any tree remain today. So adding in thirty foot of tree preservation where it abuts them, I think, is a bigger benefit than they have right now.
How many lots are we talking about with the existing request?
A thirty total is what we're willing to limit it to.
What was it before?
Well, we never had anything before. I mean, we had an RA application with C three on the corner. There was some conceptual things that were thrown around, but because that corner was C three, we didn't have a plat that, you know, accompanied the zoning. So I, there wasn't a number.
So it was just to get to as many one acre lots as you.
Correct.
Could get. Okay.
But, so if you look at Memorial and, and what would front there, you would have a really nice, like I said, you know, tree buffer, except for where the access point would be.
Could you address the composting use unit and what limits at all would be placed on that? I'm concerned about any kind of massive.
We can scratch it.
Those are all my questions at this point. We do have a number of people signed up to speak.
I want to ask about math real quick.
Please.
I thought I heard you say one point four lots per acre. That would be smaller than an acre lots.
No, no, the total density is one point four dwelling units per acre.
One point four dwelling units per acre. What, what's the difference between dwelling unit and a house, then?
So, so there, it's like forty and change, and we have thirty. So it's, it's a density greater than. No, because it's like, the actual acreage in the staff report says it's forty, forty-one point three seven, somewhere else it says it's forty-three.
Right.
It's like one point four acres per.
Yes.
One point four acres per lot?
Correct. Yeah, sorry.
So one point four, okay. One point four lots per acre would mean they were, okay.
Yeah.
That would mean they were smaller than one acre lots. Okay. So we're back to about one point four acre lots.
Thirty lots, forty plus acres, whatever the.
About one point four acre lots on average, then, okay.
Yes.
Mr. Box?
Yes.
Am I on here? If in some mythical future universe, the turnpike authority decides to take part of your land, how will that affect your thirty-foot setback tree cover from Memorial?
So it, it wouldn't. Any taking would be along the turnpike, not along Memorial.
And how would it affect your number of units per acre?
Well, I mean, it, he might lose some lots, right? We're, we're willing to say that the maximum number of lots is thirty. If a taking comes in and takes out a piece to where we can't configure thirty lots, perhaps we have less lots than thirty in the after.
But perhaps you can configure thirty lots, and suddenly the lots are smaller than an acre, or smaller than one point four acres anyway.
Well, it couldn't be smaller than an acre.
No, but they could be smaller than one point four acres.
Yeah, so I, I guess we could commit that in, in a hypothetical world where that happens, those lots couldn't be along Memorial.
It seems to me that if they come in and take your property along Memorial.
Well, they're not taking it along Memorial.
I'm sorry, along, along the turnpike. It's going to just push everything into a smaller space, is it not? If you're, if you've got a minimum or a maximum number of lots as opposed to a maximum or minimum size lot, then the taking would simply force the number of lots into a smaller space.
Right. Because if we went with a minimum lot size, that would, would guarantee that, you know, it's, truly, the maximum of thirty would get smaller as the available land to develop on got smaller.
I'm just saying, it, it would be the only way to, you know, logically preserve anything like a one point four.
So what if we committed to an average of one point four, and then we still have the thirty-foot tree buffer along Memorial?
Well, I think that would be better.
That's the same, isn't it, if it's an average?
Again, we're committing to an average of one point four, you're right back where you started. It doesn't exist. I mean, that, that.
It, it, it is an average, but when you're dealing with especially treed property and, and property that has a lot of, of difference in the topography and, and all of that, it's also very common practice because it's, it's.
Could, could we use dwelling units? You try to make a standard.
A maximum. I mean, that would be.
That way, as the topography moved, detention, whatever, you'd still have to use a, a number of dwelling units per acre.
Oh.
My point was that if he's, committing to an average of one point four acre is no change. If he's limiting to thirty acres on forty, thirty lots on forty-four acres, then that's already an average of one point four acres.
But if they take part of it, then it's squeezing it up into smaller lots.
The problem is if that's subsequent, that maybe five years from now, they may already get a plat, put some houses on it, and then they get the taking, and then you.
Yeah, once it's developed, we won't have anything to say about it, so.
Right. Um, we still need to hear if the neighbors had anything in addition on this one, but really hoping y'all are thinking about why twenty-two lots on forty-four acres can't be done, it's two acres.
That won't pencil.
Average two acres. It, somebody overpaid for some property then that wasn't zoned properly.
Well.
Okay.
I mean, what, again, we, we just want what these folks had the benefit of, and these folks, and these folks, and these folks, and these folks, and these folks.
Just rezone it all then? No. I mean, sorry, some things are different than others. Some have, they're on higher elevation than the other ones, as they've said. Some of them are up against the turnpike where some of that could be taken by the state. There is not exactly uniform situations with every one of those you pointed at, and some of which, just because we approved them recently, does not mean we're going to approve everything. And just because they were approved a long time ago, doesn't mean we're going to approve everything.
No, I get that. Yeah, they're all different. But in terms of impact, I mean, this is obviously significantly smaller than, you know, the large swath on the south side of the turnpike.
Other questions from commissioners before we hear from our neighbors? Eunice, why don't you go ahead and go first, since I did not give you the opportunity to speak at the end of the, again, at the end of the other one?
What I was going to say, the neighbor just next door to this project, she had mentioned that, and she don't want to jeopardize herself, where the state had reached out to her so that she'd be losing her house, but they have not gave her an offer yet. This is the, the corner, very to the east. And we have reached that, the Turnpike Authority, they're saying they are expanding by end of the year, and they're going, doing a two-phase. They're going to start from I thirty-five to Broadway Extension first, and when that gets done, then they're going to continue going east on turnpike.
And I, I think we hear you. So at this point, with commissioners, you're going to have to decide for yourselves whether you think.
I'm not sure.
That's imminent enough to take into account, but we hear you on that.
I, I really respect that two acres, and if it goes another half, two and a half, and I'm sure neighbors would, everybody will be here, hopefully go along with it instead of five. I mean, I'm, when we bought the property, we knew it was going to be some homes. If it's not going to be five acres, I would respect that two point five or two acres. Well, hopefully two point five. But that doesn't matter because the applicant, when he purchased the south side of turnpike, after he got it approved, well, he flipped it. Well, he's going to flip this one too. He's going to get it approved with small lots, and then you have another applicant's going to come over here, downsize it more. They're flippers. Thank you.
Thank you. It says, I know we've got three Mitchners signed up to speak, so I'll just leave it to the three of you to just work out who's coming up first. We'll just say that, the pew, the, the whole pew is just.
I don't think, I don't think, I think, I think our, we try to make our point as best as possible.
Okay. No one want, no Mitchners want to speak to, to the one point four lots that, that the applicant mentioned? You'd have to come to the podium, though. I'll let you think about it. Kirk can go before you.
Just real quick, Ross Smith, again, one three eight two nine, Emmerlake Road. We're just willing to compromise. We just want to meet somebody in the middle here. And we tried that last night, met a meeting and didn't get anywhere, so we've already lost the, the two, the five acres lots, so something in the middle would be great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, I mean, we want what was the, the conference planned a long time ago. And, and you know, and if we're not going to get that, then, you know, we want the biggest size we can. I mean, that's, that's all we can ask for, to protect the environment, protect the water, and try to keep that, the way of living out there more rural than urban. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk or Jennifer? Looks like you're fighting each other to decide which one.
I'll be very quick. Jennifer Lucatus again. You know, they point out that they want the same that they have all around, but if you look at those numbers on those acreages, it's not all around. And the difference is, you're, you're cramming all these homes right there on Memorial. All these other neighborhoods are tucked away, and they're not on that main street. And I know that traffic, you know, is not a consideration. And I know that traffic, you know, is not a consideration, it's, that's a whole nother department or area, but it is dangerous. I was almost killed on that street this week because people don't stop, they don't pay attention, and I was a sitting duck, and thank God I'm here today, but it was really close, and they had nowhere to go except for off into the ditch. So now we're putting all these, you know, with ingress and egress on Memorial and Midwest, it's not tucked away and hidden like the, like below, because those people aren't going to be on Memorial. They're going to go two different directions to get to 35. So I just don't think, you know, the smart thing to do is to think about the future, think about the Turnpike, think about the traffic, and we can only do that now. We can't wait, and we can't bring lives back, because there's been a lot of accidents out there, there's been fires out there. There's just not enough services to support all these more people, especially directly on that road.
Thank you. Kirk?
Sir? I have one question first, I guess, of the applicant. They talked about, I heard a 50-foot green belt, then I heard a 30-foot green belt. Does the 30-foot start at the center line of the road, or does it start at the edge of the road easement inward? The property line's center of the road, and they have an easement of 20-something feet on each side? Okay, we need to make sure that's clear. I'm surprised none of you all thought of that, but, so the 30-foot will start at the end of the road easement?
End of the road, yes.
Yeah, going south. Okay, that's the first question. Oh, and I was just thinking, same thing that Rusty had said, Commissioner. If they take three to six acres, which is what I calculate they're going to take based on the 50 or 100-foot easement, the 30 lots will be a smaller size. They won't be 1.4 acres unless they, as they just committed to the 1.4 acres. One thing for the commissioners, I'm reading this development guide, and it says rural medium intensity. This is Urals Guide, and it says two acres, .5 per acre lots, which is two acre minimum. Then it says, asterisk, smaller lots, one to two acres, may be allowed in cluster developments, provided, this is the key, provided gross density of the project is maintained, which would mean if you have 40 acres, you can have 20 lots. I don't know where we got 31 lots, and everybody acts like it's over. We still got the plant, the city council, we've got the PUD process, we've got a lot of the things we can argue and fight on. I think it would be great if we could, you know, kind of make a deal and move on without having to go through another year of fighting this, but I appreciate everything you guys do, and I'm looking for an answer on that medium intensity. I don't know...
I would suggest you talk to staff, too.
Do you know the answer to that?
You want to?
Is it two acres?
So, yeah, that's correct. That's the comprehensive plan. So that's the guideline to follow, which is one of the reasons why the TE is recommending RA2, which would be a larger lot zoning district.
So this isn't rural medium intensity, then? It is now, which just says right here, provided the gross density of the project is maintained at two acre minimum.
That's what would be allowed by right.
Huh?
That's what would be allowed by right.
Oh.
One of the reasons they filed the PUD is to vary that.
Okay. I'm educated.
And if...
I need education.
Making sure I'm following it, too, because I don't always follow it. And so our approval previously, now they can do two acres. Is that right?
It's allowed by the LUDA now.
By the new approval, they can now do two acres. The rest of this is just now...
That's what it sounds like to me.
That's right, that's right.
That's what I'm reading.
So we gave, that was part of my vote a moment ago, was because now I know they can do two acres. But beyond that, whether they're willing to do a PUD and negotiate details that are two or above, well, if we give them their PUD, it can be below. If we deny it, they can do two acres, but we don't get to have any other restrictions through a PUD. I'd like to have the PUD with various restrictions and two acres or above, but...
Maybe we can work that out. Thank you.
Commissioners? We've heard Commissioner LaForge, and we're going to need a motion. Where's everybody else?
Yeah, I will say this. When I started on the commission years ago, I had a different view of these types of developments. I've kind of progressed over time and drawn a line in the sand for myself at that two acres without sewer and water. It's just, and that's even pushing it to me this far out from city services, so, you know, two acres is my limit, and I'm not going to, not going to budge from that.
So for clarity, you're saying keep, if we were to approve, keep TE1 and go to RA2?
Yep.
That's a two acre minimum?
Yep.
Okay. Other thoughts? Otherwise, I think it's time for a motion. Just a point of clarification. So RA2, two acre minimum, is that two dwelling unit, or .5 dwelling units per acre? Or how does that work in a PUD? Sarah?
Cut off everything.
It's too late, we're here too late.
They didn't? They, Mr. Box, arranged that. Okay. I just want to clarify that, okay, there's two rural zoning districts. RA2 is the one that we suggested because the density is more in line with the rural medium. So the name of the district is a two-acre residential district, but the lot size can be as small as 30,000 square feet. Both zoning districts allow the same minimum lot size. The difference is the density. The RA2 density is an average, or it is not an average, it's a density, the density that's allowed in RA2 is .35 to .45 dwelling units per acre. If the RA is allowed, then it's .7 to one dwelling unit per acre. So because our zoning districts don't exactly align with the rural medium LUDA, we recommend RA2 whenever someone has a rural medium LUDA, because that's the closest density to what's supported in the comprehensive plan.
So this 30 lot minimum that David has suggested is closer to what?
It would be, that would be .75 dwelling units per acre. By my math, using 40 acres as the, so 30 over 40, would be .75 dwelling units per acre, so that would be what would be allowed under RA.
Okay.
It's a pretty even math, just to take the number of acres and divide by two to get what RA2 or the rural medium would support.
Gotcha.
Okay.
I think I'm following that. I think what I'm hearing is there's support for two acre lots, but not for smaller than two acre lots, despite the compromise that David has recommended of the northern part of this parcel, the first 30 feet being where we would retain the trees, and then he's suggesting that we'd have a minimum, a maximum number of lots at 30 lots, is the compromise that has been recommended by the applicant. I'm hearing Commissioner Privet suggest that two acre minimum is as far as he'll go. Where are we? I think somebody just needs to make a motion so we can see where we are, then.
Mike was...
You want to give the applicant one more chance before we take this final vote?
Yes.
Might we defer this and let my client go and see if they can find a way to make that pencil and continue discussion with the neighbors?
I like that idea.
I would love some head nods or no's or something.
I think, I mean, as we were looking at, this is a good exhibit, but it's a hand-drawn exhibit.
It is.
So, I mean, if we could get some hard lines with some actual lot sizes, and I think that would help.
Just so that there's not any false hope being given here, I'll just tell you where I am right now is just a flat no. I would vote against this application, so...
I think I'm going to no right now, too.
If I could ask just to make sure I'm clear, though, but if we vote no on, okay, vote no on the way they want it, but a no less than do two acre lots?
No. It's only the comp plan. It's still Zoned AA. The PUD is required to change the lot sizes.
Got it, okay, got it.
Also, I would say if we're going to take another run at this, we'd really like to see if you could go to 50 feet of preserved vegetation on Memorial.
Okay, so we need a motion on the continuance, it sounds like, first, to see if there's an appetite for that, but we don't have to. I mean, we're making a recommendation to city council. It is still our prerogative to make a recommendation that still leaves the applicant time to have those discussions, so...
Are we just continuing until a later date, later to be determined?
How long?
I think two weeks. Our strong preference would be to defer it and allow, because if you make a motion one way or the other, parties are going to retract to their camps, and there won't be negotiation.
Yep, that's fair. We need a motion, though. I cannot make the motion.
July 13?
Works for me.
All right, make a motion to defer the item July 13 meeting.
Second.
The motion is to continue item 28 until the July 13 meeting. That motion's been seconded by Commissioner Powers. Please cast your votes. And the motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
For speaking up when you did, that was helpful.
All right. We have no further items in the separate items to be heard. We are now in line for additional items.
Still can't deny, we can still deny.
We're now in line for additional items, which includes the consider, which is time for an election of planning commission offices. What a meeting to decide whether we should, you want to be an officer, right? When we've been here for five and a half hours, but I think we're in line for nominations.
Remind me what officers we have. Chairman, what else?
The chairman and the vice chairman.
That's it.
Mr. Chairman, are you willing to serve another year?
I am, if you'll have me.
Then I nominate Kamal Pennington as chair. And are you willing to serve another year?
Yes.
And Nate Clare as vice chair.
I want to second it, because I appreciate you guys doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds, are there any further nominations? Then I think we need a motion to approve of the election of...
I move that we elect Kamal Pennington as our chairman.
Thank you.
And Nate Clare as our vice chairman.
The motion is to elect Kamal Pennington as the chair of the planning commission and Nate Clare as the vice chair of the planning commission. Please cast your votes when available. Are we doing this one?
Second, I mean, yeah.
I should vote no. And the motion passes. Thank you, I appreciate this honor, I think, at this late point.
No do-overs.
All right, communications and reports, planning commission committees. Don't believe there are any planning commission members. Are there anyone wishing to be heard? We've been heard a lot today. Planning Department.
No, no.
Nothing from Planning Department. Municipal Council's office.
Did you go by the commissioners?
Citizens to be heard, any further.
Did you go by the commissioners?
He's in steamroll mode.
I didn't, I was trying, I'm steamrolling. Unless everyone would like to make a comment. Commissioner Clare?
No.
I have comments to make.
Please, Commissioner Powers.
I want to echo your welcome to our new commissioner. I, what a hearty soul you must be to sit through this and still come back next time. But I have two things that I need to talk about. One is kind of a general thing that I'd like staff to listen to. You know, as we're moving on with our code update and just generally talking a lot more about the need for affordable housing in Oklahoma City, the thing about, the code update being about ADUs and that kind of thing, I'm remembering a time, it's been several years now, when we got into this thing about a couple who built a tiny home, and then we found out that we don't have any way to deal with that, and we were going to have to rezone their property in the middle of a neighborhood to a trailer park in order for them to be able to park it there and all this. It fell apart, they went away, be as it may, but I remember very distinctly being told by the people who do building code stuff that we don't really have a code that is suited for the building of, like, tiny homes. Now, whether you decide that a tiny home is something that's on wheels or not on wheels, it's not my concern. If we're going to get into the ADU business, and especially the kind of tiny ADU backyard things, I think we need to take, because he also said it would take more than a year if we started today to adopt that code. And so if we're seriously thinking about that as a part of Oklahoma City's future, and I think we are, and I think we should, you know, we need to be moving in that direction. I have no idea whether we are or are not. They may be doing this as we speak, but I'm curious about it, and I just want to raise that flag. And so that's one thing. The other thing is, our illustrious director has asked that, based on comments we've given to him, Mr. Butler has asked that there be some thought given to an actual way it might work for the planning commission to cooperate a little bit more with the traffic commission, either on the front end or at the back end, or maybe even somewhere in the middle, to, that there be some give and take, but there hasn't been any real thought or process put in place yet as to what that would look like, how it would work, who would be involved, you know, what that... So Kim Cooper Hart was kind enough to contact me and ask me if I would be interested in being just, you know, part of the spitballing process, and I am and was, and also our Ward Two Traffic Commissioner, who's been very, very active in all the traffic calming and all of that, Rob Littlefield. So what we decided between the three of us is that he would go back to traffic commission, I would go back to planning commission, and just put it to you. It's like, is this something that we're interested in pursuing? If so, we'll form a little subcommittee, and I've already drafted Nate Clare, since he knows a little something about that, about traffic commission and how it works and how it might work, and what would be useful and helpful. And so I, I'm just asking you, and I'll go with a nod of the head, we don't have to take a vote, whether that's something that we do, in fact, really want to keep moving forward on and pursue. If so, then we'll get together, we'll talk about it a whole bunch, and at some point I'll come back to you and say, this is what we've been talking about, does that sound even feasible to you? And if so, let's think about how we're going to make it happen. I don't know whether it'll take action at the city council, or whether we can do it amongst ourselves, because we don't know what we want to do yet.
I am wholeheartedly in support, especially as we consider cases like we did just now, where there are significant traffic concerns that we are, have a limited ability to address in the ways that neighbors would find meaningful. So I fully support it.
Nod of the head. I want to see nods of the head. Nods of the head, nods of the head, nods of the head, nods of the head. Okay, I'm going with it.
I like it.
All right.
Keep me in the loop.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Privet?
I'm good.
Summons?
All right.
Thank you for being here. Sorry it was a marathon, I promised they weren't all this long. Commissioner Noble?
Good day.
Commissioner LaForge?
Good day.
Municipal Council's office. Citizens to be heard. Other business, seeing none, we are very happily adjourned.